Student Board Member, hello, welcome. And now the microphone is on. Welcome to our July 9, 2024 meeting. I would like to welcome our new student board member, Remi Javidzad. And he is a, he's going to be a 12th grader. He is captain of the water polo team and has a lot of wonderful things to share with us this coming year. But first, he has agreed to do the flag salute for us. All rise, please.
Face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you could take us through our mission, vision, and values?
Our mission is educational excellence. Vision is our students will relieve or realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in complex, changing world. And our community pledge?
Yes, if you have that in front of you.
Yes.
Okay.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public, while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
I motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, report of closed session, Dr. Breggy.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. We had one item that was an action item in closed session. The board has voted four to zero to approve the settlement for case number 1702784, 2024-2025.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to public comment. And we will go to Zoom. Okay, Vice Mayor Sharona Nazarian, are you with us on Zoom? Sharona? Sharona? Okay, Sharona, are you there? She had said that she's on about five minutes ago.
Is she on? Hello?
Oh, there she is. Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you guys hear me?
We can certainly hear you. You could be a little louder. Can you hear us?
Okay. For some reason, I'm having a very hard time. I can't hear anything at all, but I hope that you can hear me.
We can hear you and we can see you. Welcome.
My name is Sharona Nazarian, and I wanted to start off by expressing my deepest gratitude to our school board members and President Stern for your outstanding leadership. Your dedication and commitment to our students and our community are truly commendable, and we are very grateful. Several families have approached me with a pressing concern regarding the need for additional classrooms at the newly renovated El Rodeo School, particularly for the fourth grade. And it's crucial that we address this need to ensure that our children receive the best possible education in an environment that supports their growth and development. And I believe that families residing within the horseman's zone should not be allowed to transfer to an El Rodeo or vice versa unless there's ample space for everyone. So residents in each school zone should have the right to walk their children to school. This not only fosters a sense of community, but also aligns with our sustainable urban development efforts, promoting a walkable and environmentally friendly community. And forcing families who live just a few blocks away from El Rodeo to drive across town to another school is, I believe, counterproductive. If a family is within the El Rodeo Zone, that is where their children should attend. It's essential to prioritize accessibility and convenience for all our residents. And while I'm here today as an individual and not in my capacity as Vice Mayor for the City of Beverly Hills, I must stress that any funds, including the close to $15 million allocated to the Joint Powers Agreement annually, are intended to support the entire community, including addressing issues such as this. Because we aim to cultivate and support young families within our school system as they are the future of our city. Families who contribute significantly through taxes deserve the right to send their children to the schools designated for their residential zone. And as you already know, we are an aging community, and we must do everything in our power to attract and retain young families in our community. And in an effort to remain competitive with private schools and even surpass them, we need to invest in our public educational system. So once again, I commend you for your excellent work and all the great things that you're doing. Let us continue to work together and serve the best interests of our children and our community. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I apologize, I can't hear you. I hope that you can hear me. Thank you.
Thank you so much if you can hear us. Thank you so much for your time. We do have another member on Zoom, Mayor Taban, Dr. Mayor Taban. Ray Taban. In person, and we can return. Okay. So thank you for those of you who, those of you who came to our meeting tonight. Dr. Rochelle Hakoc would like to speak.
Hi, everybody. Just want to say thank you for being here in July. I know I'm here to talk about El Rodeo and the fourth grade class and taking away a teacher for that cohort again. But I want to say thank you for all of you guys. I think the board has done an amazing job at putting so much of your own time into trying to understand why parents are upset and what, you know, all of the different levels of what is going on. And I, I know that you guys have been doing that, and I really appreciate that. I just wanted to kind of say thank you today. It's great, you know, my son is on summer break and a bunch of kids are on summer break. And I'm getting, you know, I'm in contact with some parents and a lot of kids' anxiety, you know, has been lowered, which is interesting. And, you know, it is third grade. It's not middle school kids and high school kids who've got this whole, you know, academic situation going on in the summer as a letdown. You know, it's, it's interesting how there's a bunch of kids who have less anxiety being in school, and they are being less exposed to negativity, you know, homophobic slurs, racial slurs, cursing over the summer during summer camp than in school. And I just, again, I'm emphasizing that because there needs to be something that I'd love to see a change and I'd love to be a part of the change. I'm here to help. I'm here, I'll donate my time, I'll give you my time, whatever you need. And I'd love to hear, I know there's going to be a discussion today, and I can't wait to hear it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Ben Haguli, welcome. Ben Haguli.
Thank you very much for your time. I've been on Zoom a couple of times, and I couldn't really hear anyone. So nice to see everyone in person. I wanted to second a couple of things that have already been said. One is to thank Dr. Breggy and the entire board for their time and their hard work. I've been on boards before, and it's kind of a thankless job, so I appreciate it really much. We all appreciate it. I'm kind of going to want to walk through some of the things that I've mentioned before about the fourth grade class size. We do understand sort of the calculations and the challenges regarding the fourth and fifth grade class size. That said, you know, I understand that there's a maximum allowable of 29, and we're reaching that, and we're, we're doing what's allowable. But I think my point and some of the points of the other parents is that the max allowable is not the same as a healthy number and a number that will support the children's educational and emotional needs. I know for my son and a lot of kids, through COVID, there's been a lot of slippage through education, both academically, emotionally. And it's really just not the time for this set of kids who have been in and out of school and in and out of Zoom for the past three years to be in a class of 30. It's just not a good time. Maybe healthier, a different mix, maybe. But it's just, it's like piling on sort of a problem with already a problem. You know, the way I like to think about it is there's, you have an adult cholesterol level of 240 milligrams per deciliter that's high risk. 239 is not healthy. So if you think that 30 is bad and 29 is okay, it's not. It's the same exact thing. Just because we're one under the maximum doesn't mean it's healthy. And so, you know, our amazing police force, so far, they don't, they don't go for the max allowable response time. The Beverly Hills, I know, doesn't aim for the max allowable of anything or the bottom of anything, which is, that's what 29 is. That's the, it's max allowable. I'm not sure why we chose our children's class size to start with choosing the maximum allowable of that. So if money's the issue, we'd like to know, we'd like to know specifically what is the issue. And not we'd like to know, we'd like to be part of the solution. I think all the parents that I've talked to, we want to share our time and invest whatever we can do to help to bridge that gap. We're here to understand the problem and to help. So thank you again for your time, for your hard work. And it's nice to see everyone in person and not Zoom. It's much better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, that concludes our public comment. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items L, M, N, R, S, and V.
Can I get a second?
Second the motion.
Okay, thank you. And now that the motion is on the floor, I just wanted to make a few comments. Not controversial at all, I just wanted to share that a lot of the items here do involve technology. But I wanted to say that often when you guys are viewing what we do approve and the work we do here, it's not always clear to everyone what some of these tools are. And as someone who works in the schools almost every day, I can tell you that some of the technological advances are really very useful. And I noted a few here that I thought I would just spend a few moments telling you about how, what I know about them and why they're effective. I'll also remind you that LAUSD recently spent, I think, a billion dollars to craft an AI tool, an AI assistant for the kids that actually tells them how they did on a certain test, lets their parents know if there, if there are any issues about how they're doing in class, a whole variety of things. It hasn't taken off yet, but needless to say that a lot of districts are embracing different technological tools. So what I do see here on the consent calendar that we are looking at renewing some of the things that currently support our, our district and our learning. And one is gaggle, and I'll tell you what that is, and these strange names. But anyone who is here, Dr. Breggy, and they want to correct me, but my understanding of gaggle is that it very seamlessly can do a keyword search, and it can look on emails or posts that a kid does at home that, God forbid, says something that is very threatening to themselves or others. And then within minutes, I understand that it comes to the inbox of a designated person. And I know for certain that in the three and a half years or so that I've been on the board, that there have been occasions where this actually has been a very preventative measure. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, I can, I could give you countless stories where there's a student that's awake in the middle of the night and, and typing on their district-issued computer, and those keywords, as you mentioned, come up and alert us. And there's several of us, Mr. Meade is here. The administration, the school principals are notified. We've actually had a number of circumstances where between one of us, it's woken one of us up, and we've then had police at the door when a student is harming or threatening to harm themselves or others. So I can give you countless stories of that.
Now, of course, we would aim to be preventative in the first place that we are, you know, hopefully not having students who are having such a crisis. But invariably, kids will post things, and I, I just think that it's a very compelling tool. Another one is GoGuardian, and I've seen this at LAUSD, I've seen it at Glendale Unified, and I also know that we make use of it here. And my understanding of it is that when students are doing something online, so they're, let's say they're all taking a quiz, and it's being disseminated from, from the teacher, from a database, but there are some kids who somehow get past a firewall or something, and then they're, they're on a screen they shouldn't be. And so this allows the teacher to monitor and see that all the, all the students are being safe with their computer choices and that they're all complying and staying on the test, for example. Again, unfortunately, we have to have such a thing, but it is a tool that has some utility. And then lastly, I recognize Edlio, which is a web page management server. And what it does is it takes all the communications from the school. And so there's many, right? There's ones that come from teachers, there's ones that need to go to teachers, ones that need to go to parents, ones that need to go just to 12th graders. And this streamlines and organizes a lot of the communications. So it makes it a lot easier and more efficient. So anyway, kudos to those in the Silicon Valley who make such billions for such things. But I just think that it's interesting to, to note that we do have them. So with that, call for the vote? Yes.
Of course, and one of the things is that all of these were mentioned in a budget, and they're all budgeted for. I'd like to make also just a comment on it that I did ask a question about how much did the GoGuardian, and I brought that up in my questions before the thing, and I said, and it was, I thought, in addition to where they may be harming themselves, you also can detect bullying and things of that nature also. So I wholeheartedly approve of all, even though I don't understand many of them, I do heartily approve of all of these because they do give us better leverage in, in technology than we would have had otherwise. So. have had otherwise. So I just wanted to share that with the parents that I would very hope that they understand that this is money well spent.
Yes, we have a lot of data to support the, the evolution of technology in the area of safety, personal safety.
Okay, thank you. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As for the items that were pulled.
Well, what I would like to ask is if it would be possible to table items L, M, N, R, and S. Actually, I will do this formally and then I will explain. I would like to make a motion to table items L, M, N, R, and S.
I will make a second to that motion.
You want to table?
Thank you.
I'm just want to discuss them so in case we do want to.
I have a motion to table, I have a motion to table.
This is what happened last time.
Yeah, no, I don't want to table them.
I don't think you want to table it. We're already going to discuss it.
Okay. So motion dies for lack of a second. Then in that case.
Proceed with the discussion then?
Yeah, but what I'll do is I'll put, I'll make a motion then to, well, somebody needs to make a motion to approve these items then so we can discuss.
I will make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Daniel, well, with Daniel Janulitis. But I am actually pulling these items to discuss all of them in total. I'd like to discuss all of the things because my concern is the amount of money that is being spent. I think I totaled up all of these together and they were all like totally over $600,000.
Rochelle, do you want to make a motion to approve all of them?
Just do all five of them?
No, no, because I think some of them will need be, I may not approve of all of them. I may not approve of all. I pulled that one so that I would get a chance to discuss. I may not necessarily disapprove of this one, but we're approving so much money that I, I wonder if there is a plan in place for all of these items. Three marriage counselors, we have two assistant principals at the school, we have counselors, and, and we haven't, it seemed to be addressing the issue of behavior the way it should be addressed. And bringing all these in, what guarantee do I have that we're going to be able to handle these problems? That's my concern.
So, so can I, since I pulled these, can I address?
Yes.
Thank you. Remy, if you don't mind, I'm going to, usually you would be deferred to, but I'm going to speak on this. The, the reason I wanted to table all of these and, and why I won't be supporting any of these is that we, right now, these are almost, these are over half a million dollars in expenditures in one specific area dealing with social, emotional, and behavior. As Ms. Mark has already indicated, we have two APs at our elementary schools. We have a Bulldog Center and a Staff Bulldog Center and a Staff Norm and Aid Center at the high school and the middle school. We already have counselors, we already have psychologists. What we don't have is a plan. What we keep doing like whack-a-mole is just, there's a problem, hire somebody. There's a problem, hire somebody. And I think this district has more pressing issues right now that this deserves a closer look, which is why I do not want to support it tonight, to get some statistics on this in front of us, effectiveness of these programs before we move forward on any of these renewals. Because this, this, we're talking about three L or MFTs, LMFTs or MFTs for the sites. And on top of that, two behavioral specialists, coordinators, whatever you want to call them. And with all of that in place, last year, we still had a multitude of issues. So much, in fact, that there is a drove of incoming fourth grade parents saying that the behavior issue is so horrendous at, at what's, at Elrodeo this coming year, that there's a desire to open up another class. There's a want from the community, or I should say a demand from the community to open up another class. And they consistently indicate behavior is one of the driving issues. We have all of these things in place that are supposed to prevent that, we're not preventing it. And yet we just keep throwing money at a problem that's not being solved. That's irresponsible of us to do that. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'm saying we need to have a hard, long look at the statistics and the data on how these services are being rendered in all of the schools before we continue with this, because this obviously is not the solution. So I'm not going to support something that is not solution-driven.
Can I speak to that?
Of course you can.
So I, I understand what you're saying. Unfortunately, a lot of these, by the way, were renewals in the sense that they are existing, existing resources that, that we have.
After one year. Some of them are after one year. So we've tested them out and in my eyes, they don't work or we haven't been proven that they work.
It's hard to say though, there's one thing in behavior, we say, we want direction, not perfection. What do I mean by that? There are so many complex variables that you can't just say, oh, you do this and boom, the behavior's over. Because we're dealing with humans, we're dealing with multiple factors. Also, these professionals are not in place just for this quote unquote problem of the fourth grade. There's a number of things that these individuals do. And even though we're still hearing a lot about some behavioral issues in fourth grade, these resources weren't deployed just to attack that problem.
I didn't say they were.
No, I know, I know.
For the record.
No, but I, I also have frustration about that situation, but these, these resources, for all you know, covered things that would have come to the forefront had they not been there. And, and also because a lot of, let's just go with the, the talk therapy aspect.
But I don't know. That's the problem. If you know, I don't know. I don't have evidence.
Right.
That's why I want to study this more.
Right. But there's not a cause and effect of, oh, we have this MFT and so therefore we're going to, we're going to see this, you know, or we're going to see less incidence of X, Y, and Z.
Why are we a data-driven district only when it's convenient for us?
There is a.
Why when you're going to have an expenditure of almost $600,000, we can't get the data involved? And the board can look over this data and peruse it and say, wait a minute, this is working or it's not working. All I asked for was to table this, not to vote no.
I hear you.
But you're putting me in a position to vote no. But, but I think, listen, if it was $150,000, different story. It's almost $600,000.
But I, when we had the strategic plan follow-up. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. When we had the strategic plan review, end of May, first week of June, my understanding of that conversation is that Mrs. Collins Williams, who's out sick today.
She's actually available.
Oh, is she?
She's on Zoom.
So then maybe we can invite her.
She is, she's going to, go ahead.
So maybe we can start there. But yes, Ms. Crashauer?
Ms. Laura Collins Williams is on Zoom.
Right.
But you don't know that she's raising her hand.
Perfect. So I'll let her take the floor first.
Okay, good idea.
And then we can go from there. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things, which is that I was very satisfied following the strategic plan update in regard to the year-end closing out, that these were working. And my understanding was that we have over 3,000 students and a lot of their needs were met. During that strategic plan, I brought up that we have a hotspot in the fourth grade and we're going to talk about it later this year. And I don't think that the hotspot fourth grade takes away from everything else good that's been happening in that department in regards to these folks and what they've been doing. So I really don't want to, I, I hear your concerns and I appreciate your desire to be fiscally responsible. You know that I come from the same place. But when we got the results in June, May, it was very clear that our students getting these supports in IEPs were doing just as well as the other students in terms of academics. And we did get a lot of really good data that came out of that discussion. And that's why I'm comfortable to move forward. And I also welcome Mrs. Collins Williams' input on this.
Can I, can I also just add something really quick? Because I think that we've come a long way through the strategic planning process to identify some of the areas of student achievement that the board wanted to see, you know, a better view of, of the data. And we've spent some, a great deal of time so that we're, as a team, working with our teachers to make sure that, okay, this is what we're looking for, this is the metric, this is, this is what we're collecting. I just want to say that, and certainly Ms. Collins Williams can, can add to this, but I think that we can collect the, the type of data that you're looking for if you share that with us what you're looking for. It, just the nature of, of working with social, emotional difficulties and challenges with, with families, I can just tell you that a lot of it's just a narrative where, you know, the families feel supported and resources are provided. And so it's, it's more of a qualitative type of data that we have. But if there's something specific that the board would like for us to look at so that we could provide that to you over like a period of a year, we, we could certainly do that. You know, it's, this is a good time to have this conversation before the new school year starts.
Dr. Bregge, I appreciate that, which is one of the reasons why I tried to table it, so I can frame some questions and get more specific data to help inform my vote on this either way. So.
Can we have Ms. Collins Williams now if she's available to, hi. Welcome, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you. Hold on, Ms. Collins Williams, we're trying to problem solve here.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, she said I can't hear you, but you can't hear me.
Hello?
Ah, there you are. Hello. Thank you so much for joining us.
Okay, thank you so much. I apologize for not being there in person today. I appreciate all of the heartfelt conversation and discussion that, that has been occurring. I just want to kind of frame everything for the board so that you have an understanding of what these contracts are, what these people do, and what the roles are in the district and what has been occurring for the last couple of years. The three MFTs, Danielle, Adithi, and Julie, they have full caseloads of students that they're seeing, students who are both in special education and in general education, and they are providing support for this, for Adithi splits her time between Hawthorne and, well, now ER and Horace Mann. She sees over 35 children who are receiving support to allow them to access their educational program. And Dr. Stern, you made a very good point. This particular service is not about behavior. It's about emotional support in order for the students to be able to access their educational program. When we had the strategic plan update, both myself and Dr. Skon spoke about the high number of threat assessments that were happening at the middle school, but also they're happening across the districts because children are coming to school in crisis and they're not able to even participate in their academic program. This is not, this is not, and this is not something that a counselor can do, and this is not something that a school psychologist can do. They are not licensed or, or trained to provide this type of support. Additionally, Mr. Daniel Janulitis provides the family and individual therapy on students' IEPs in both of our counseling enriched classes that are located, one is located at Beverly Vista, and the other one is located at, at the high school, Beverly Hills High School in the annex. These are services on children's IEPs that we are legally responsible for. I previously had an outside agency providing these same services and it was costing the district almost twice as much, almost three times as much as what it cost for Mr. Daniel, 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 Janulitis to do this. Sorry, that name together is hard to say back to back. So I looked at a way to provide the same services and actually a better quality of service because we have the same therapist that has now developed a therapeutic relationship with families and the students and the staff providing service for them at a, at a more, at a cost-effective measure and then, and a better service for the kids. Julie, Tohada Robles, is actually the MFT that participates and supports the Bulldog Aid Center. So if we do not have her, we will not have a therapist in the Bulldog Aid Center. In addition, she also supports students who are on the campus who are not part of the CEC class. So it's a dual focus and we're going to have, there are so many students needing support at the elementary level for the coming school year, for the 24, 25 school year. She's going to also help support some of the students at elementary along with Adithi. As far as Ms. Ellie Samadis is concerned, she has been instrumental in helping support our parents in mobilizing them to be able to support their students to have, to be successful in school. And as, as, as Judy said, when I presented the information to the board at the end of the year at the strategic plan update, the final update, I did provide very detailed information and data about the implementation of that program and the support of that program. What, what I didn't get to share with the board and I'd like to share now is that through the support of both Danielle and Ellie, particularly at the high school class, we had three students that had death dates this year, meaning they had, excuse me, a date that they were going to commit suicide. Through the support that we provided the students, they graduated. We have students with very significant family issues that are impacting them educationally, whether it be divorce, grief, substance abuse. And we are making an impact. And to not have these services in place would put children and families in jeopardy. So I, I want to say that, I want to put that on the record. These services have been very successful and very impactful, and the data is already collected to show that. So I'm happy to review it again, but I urge the board not to table this because we, or not to not approve this because we cannot start the school year without these services or we'll be doing a disservice to both our children and our families.
With Ms. Samadis, I guess, expanded role, from my understanding, looking at the contract over last year, can you describe that a little bit? Because there was, there were some changes. I think the pay was increased. And I did look and I was made to understand a little more clearly what the, what the vision is.
Yes. The vision with that is, as a clinical therapist, I would like Mrs. Samadis to, to support me in having what we call Java-like meetings. So we'll be, she'll help me facilitate bi-weekly, bi-weekly meetings with the other three therapists to look at continuity of care, planning for strategies, treatment plans, and then trying to ensure that the quality of care across the district is the same. And there, there's also something that we found to be very impactful for our families this year was, is when Ellie and the site therapists are talking, we're able to reach the whole family unit and intervene in a more effective, more of a triage-type situation and intervene in situations that may be emergent and really get good results because there's the communication. It's like, it's like homeschool communication. One side's talking to the family, or the parents, one side's talking to the children or the child, and together they're able to treat the whole family and get, get outstanding results. So that will be the expanded role that Ms. Samadis will be. That, that is what's being added to Ms. Samadis' role this year.
Okay. And then I also understand that the BCBA, which is Board Certified Behavioral Analyst, and that's Ms. Fatini.
Fatini.
Okay. So she was with us last year, correct?
She's been with us for two years.
Okay.
So we have so many, I'm sorry, you were going to ask a question.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, a lot of people don't understand what that is and how that works and why, you know, what the utility is of those particular professions. Also, since a lot of folks are concerned understandably about some of the alleged behavior issues in the fourth grade, how can we make sure, how can we depend on, say, a BCBA to assist with some of these problems?
Right. So it's absolutely essential, this, this position, this, this role can go in and assist the classroom teachers in managing individual behaviors as well as setting up systems to help improve classroom management. We also have a new staff, a staff member returning from a leave, and I've assigned them to Elrodeo to help support in, in the fourth grade. So it really, it really boils down to the amount of time and support that you're able to have staff members there. Because we didn't have, because we only had two BCBAs this past year, they were splitting their time between all four sites. Now with the return of this third staff member, we're able to have someone who's available to be at Elrodeo four days a week full-time. And if need be, I can switch over a fifth. becoming the fifth grade class, and these teachers will...the BCBAs will work...Helen and then the other staff member will work directly with the classroom teachers, like I said, to help manage individual behavior as well as the classroom behavior. And also, don't forget, we have our counseling enriched classroom at El Rodeo as well, and they help manage the behaviors in that classroom, which, some of which are things that are being talked about as concerns for the site as well. So we need the staff in order to be able to train both staff and instructional assistants and playground aides and the administrators in how to work with behavior, not discipline.
Right. Now, would they also...would the BCBA also be helping and guiding, supervising, taking data along with the BIS, like the...I don't know what you call them, but the...
The BIIS, yes.
Yes, like the behavioral...what we used to call one-on-ones or shadows, the paras or other terms, you know, they must have guidance. And often, unfortunately, there's...there can be a turnover with this profession or paraprofessionals, and it would be amazing if we can depend on some of the oversight, supervision, behavioral analysis, and real support so that these teachers, as well as the students in the classroom who have endured what sounds absolutely ridiculous, some of the behaviors, that, you know, we can feel that there will be some real concrete solutions.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. That is also part of the plan that we have in place already with the additional...with Helen and then our staff member coming back. We are...we've already set dates for training of instructional assistants and teachers on the late start Wednesdays throughout the school year to help do just that, talk about the different strategies, talk about how to collect data, and then there's time being put in place for them to collaborate and figure out how to implement the best and the most effective strategies to support the changes that we're looking for.
Right. Now, obviously, it's not just on them, but the behavioral issue, you know, needs multiple prongs to help it, and that is the APs, the principals, the parents. It's a collaborative effort to make sure that some of the behavior issues resolve. So thank you for that. Further...
I have more questions.
Oh, okay. Mr. Marco.
I don't think looking at the TV is gonna...she can't see me looking at her, right?
I can see you through the camera, yes.
Okay. These questions are for you, Laura.
Sure.
So you mentioned that having the MFT is required through the IEP or having MFT services is required through the...some IEPs?
Sorry, yes. For our students in the counseling enriched class, it is part of their...it's part of their IEP, the program that is written in their IEP, the services that are in their IEPs, yes.
Okay. So...and I do appreciate that you found a more cost-effective way to bring those services to those students. So thank you for that part of it. Does that apply to all three of the MFTs on the agenda, that they're all playing that role? Or does...
Right now, it's only Danielle that is...that it services the CEC classes, but I want to be very clear that he has a full caseload, and we have our class at Beverly Vista in particular. We...at the end of the year, we moved over almost 10 kids to that class, so it's going to need some additional support. So having...I probably will have to have Julie's support in there as well as splitting some time between the elementary schools as well. So it's not decreasing, it's increasing.
Okay. Thank you, I understand that part of it. You said that there are certain students that are not with IEPs that do get support from these MFTs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How does a student become eligible for that support? Because that is basically free counseling we're providing for a select few students?
It's therapy, and it's based on a referral system, and there are pieces...there's a referral that has to go through me, and it has to be...it has to be reviewed, and we have to determine that the student has a need, and then there's a conversation with the therapist to see if they can support them, and then we figure out kind of a treatment plan and a length of treatment plan. It's not just ongoing forever.
There are many, 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 many students in our school that I am sure receive outside support in this area that either don't know to look to get that support within our district, and we certainly couldn't handle that number of caseloads. So it's a concern to me that we kind of have a system in place to only see a certain amount of students and not others who may be as eligible. There's a little bit of inequity in that, as far as I can see.
Well, it's good to everyone, and we try to reach the students who need the support most, who need it most at that time. Does it...like I was saying, it doesn't mean that they stay in program for the whole year. They may be able to do, you know, a series of five to seven sessions, and then they're... they learn strategies, they learn coping skills, and they're able to then start weaning off and move back in, and then we can move someone else in in that spot. But really, it is a service that is providing support for students who are unable to access their educational program because of these, whatever issues they're having either outside of school or related to...that are coming into the school because it's the whole child. So we're treating the whole child.
You are, and of course, I appreciate when children seek out help. Unfortunately, a lot of children who are suffering don't want to discuss it in the boundaries of school, so you may never know that they also may need that help as well.
But we also have the component of giving them resources. They may not want to come to us, or they may not want to discuss them in school, but that's the other piece, and that's really a big part of what Ellie does, is that she provides resources to parents, and we've done some really good work this past year because, as you pointed out, she's only been with us for one year. But we're building a strong network of resources and outside therapists and other pieces that we can give people at least a place to start to try to get their needs met if we're not able to help them, or this is not the right venue for them.
I think it's extremely kind and generous and indulgent that we do that as a school district. There is...I am detecting some inequity in this in some areas, and it's a little bit of a concern, but it's not necessarily a bad thing, but I'm concerned about its sustainability. I don't think you'll find anything like this in any other school district, and that's, I guess, a blessing and a curse.
I don't know.
Actually, there are districts that have a lot...their MFTs and social workers are actually becoming...
You'd be surprised.
Across...
Yeah, but the layers of the wellness centers, the counselors, the extra administrators, we have a lot of layers. It's not just these.
Well, yes, and we have...when we dedicated the Bulldog Aid Center, we said as much, like, there aren't a lot of schools that have, you know, just a middle school dedicated mental health, well, mental wellness center. That is true.
Right. And I'm just...I'm just...
That is...
I made a kind of a fair warning before, when they were throwing money at us for COVID, I said that you're gonna come to a day when this dries up, and we have to really think about long-term. And I don't know how much all of this, this almost $600,000, not to exceed, I do understand that, I do read the paperwork, but...which is something I would have liked to find out is how close to those amounts did we get last year, but that's okay. Obviously, we're not gonna get a study session on this. So I'm okay, we can move on and vote on these issues now.
All right. Call for the vote?
No, no, I haven't finished.
Okay, sorry. Apologies.
First of all, I appreciate this discussion because I think it has led to greater understanding of the resources and how they're gonna be used. I still am very concerned with...if I understand, we had so many of these people in place all this time, these are renewals, how this particular situation has slipped through our hands in the fourth grade, what's coming to the fourth grade. How did that happen? That's a bother to me, that why didn't we recognize this and handle this? Because I've heard it for two years. I heard it starting in the second grade when they were second graders. I heard it in the third graders with the teachers, and it really bothered me that now we're into the fourth grade and we're now really getting...trying to get a grasp of what has happened in those two years. That bothers me. I would like to understand one thing. How...I know we don't have a crystal ball, but how sure are we that what we're doing now and what we're going to put our focus on is going to help these fourth grade teachers? This really bothers me because if we couldn't do it for two years, what...I mean, I'm really very concerned about that. I'd like to know one thing. Ms. Samadis is not really...is she a licensed marriage and family therapist? In addition to her work, she is both, right?
She is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clear up, that she is also a licensed marriage...
Is she operating under the license, or is she a vendor, like a contractor?
She's working...she's working as an LMFT, as a contractor for the district.
So where does...
She's not employee, she's a contractor.
So is she...is her liability insurance through us or through herself?
Probably her own, I would imagine.
Through her private insurance, just like the other three that we employ.
Okay.
Through contract.
Okay, thank you for that.
Because I will say, when I looked at some of the not to exceed, I'll just say, I was concerned that would look really high, and then I realized, well, they're not getting, you know, the health and welfare benefits. It's sort of a consultant model.
No, I know.
But anyway, sorry, go ahead.
And can I just...anything to that, Dr. Stern? If we were...when I...the first year that we had the LMFTs, I got them through agencies, and the rates were higher than what you see there.
They all were cut.
Individual contracts with the...with the vendors, the contractors directly, and that reduced the hourly rates by $20 to $30 per hour. So we are getting a very good deal. I also look on EdJoin and I look at the other district positions that have...districts that have similar positions to that, and I look at the salaries, and don't forget...these salaries are very comparable to what they could get as district employees, but don't forget, then we would need to add the 30-plus percent for health and welfare benefits on top of that. So this is the most economically effective model. I've looked at all that, and that is always my charge and my goal is to get the most for the least amount of money because I have to be accountable to both you and the community, and I want to be able to tell you that I've done my due diligence and that I know that we're getting the best, the most that we can get for the money that we're spending.
Thank you so much. One more thing you was mentioning, the Bulldog Center, the lady who's gonna be working at the Bulldog Center at Beverly Vista, she's gonna be working with the counselor who runs the Bulldog Center. Isn't the Bulldog Center sort of under the jurisdiction of the counselor at Beverly Vista?
So yes, Mrs. Marcus, but remember, I always talk about the three lanes. The counselor at the center is a PPS counselor. She has a counseling degree as a school counselor. She is not licensed or qualified to provide therapy. The therapist, Mrs. Tahada...Julie Tahada Robles is a licensed marriage and family therapist. She is licensed and trained to do therapy. They do two different things. So school counselors do one thing, LMFTs do one thing, and school psychologists do another. They work together, but they all have...
That's what I was gonna say, but they have to...
...licensed qualifications.
Right, okay. And one other thing I wanted to bring up. Well, I'm going to say this, and I'm gonna go online, that I'm very...oh, I was...one other thing, yes. The Maple Center, the use of the Maple Center in all of these particular issues. How are we employing...because we have a contract, I believe, with the Maple Center and an agreement, and we pay them so much money. How are they involved in all of this for the edification of the viewing audience and to refresh our memories? Maybe you could share that with us.
Sure. So the Maple Center provides us with counseling interns, LMFT counseling interns, and Ally Norman Franks coordinates with them and provides the support to them, and the Maple Center provides us as LMFT to supervise their counseling interns because they're getting their hours to then become licensed. So these are interns who don't have a full license yet, so they also change over. They're only sometimes there for like one semester or one quarter or until they receive their hours.
But they have to be supervised, but they are supervised? Okay.
Through the Maple Center.
Okay, well...
Through the Maple Center, yes.
I really appreciate this discussion because I think it's lent a lot to our understanding of...what I was very, very concerned about was the $600,000 that I totaled up in my head.
We forgot the Maple Center.
And now the Maple Center, thank you. I didn't include that. How much is that?
The Maple Center is under Ed Services. It's not under Student Services, so I want to be clear with that.
Well, it doesn't matter which pocket comes out of, to me, Ms. Laura.
That's true.
But I understand it.
Can I just say one more thing? The...when we were...when I was working, when I was providing the services, the LMFT services to our CEC class, it was only one class at that point, and then it grew to the Beverly Vista classroom, we were spending almost half of what this budget is on only those counseling services. So I want to be clear that we have reduced actually our expenditures.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for lending some real understanding to this and appreciate that. I'm going to be very, very critical. I'm gonna be very upset if I don't see a change in the behavior of the group of kids in the fourth grade with all the money that we're spending, even though it's for the whole school. This discussion, I think, has been brought more to light because of that one situation at that school, and I am appalled that it came to this, to be very honest, and I'm gonna be watching very closely because I'm being asked to spread the kids out in another class because of the behavior of these kids. That's what it all amounts to. It isn't about numbers, it's about the behavior of the kids. And I'm gonna say that once again, I'm going to be watching very closely.
And I like to add to that, Rochelle, that we can make it mandatory for certain students to take part of these services, that's within our purview, but we can't make it mandatory for parents to take part of these services. But it should be said out there once again, as I will bang this drum until December 17th, that this is a parenting issue. The behavior part is a parenting issue, not the social, emotional. I understand that comes from a different origin, but the actual behavior part that we have to now spend hundreds of thousands of dollars everybody addressing is a parenting issue.
Well, but I want to say, it's not necessarily a parenting issue like in 100%. There might be, you know, it's a variable, but I will say, we all have friends, right, who are very good parents, disciplinarians, things like that, and we know, and they come and they tell us, you know, my kid just really, when he goes to class, he or she does X, Y, and Z. I'm losing my mind, I've done this, I've done that. My point being that there are parents out there who do quote-unquote "the right thing", but for whatever reason, for a number of reasons, maybe it's a deficit in the child's ability to be on the same curricular level as the others, they're self-conscious, they start acting out. There's a thousand reasons. I don't want to just say it's a parenting issue, I want to say it's an issue that parenting is one variable.
Well, are we talking about fourth grade now, or should we...
No.
Because that's fine with me if we are, I just want to know where are we, so I'll go with everyone's close.
Yeah, because I do think that we're gonna have a really transparent conversation about the class sizes, but I think that this area has been highlighted and enhanced because it appears as if we've taken a teacher away, and so it's actually created more of a highlight to what's happening in third grade. I'm not sure we'd be sitting here talking about it today if there is...if there was another teacher in there. So I think that it's really important to say that because if we wouldn't have heard about this, if there's a fourth teacher, then that changes the whole dynamic of like what's happening here. Because if we would not have heard about this because if there was a fourth, then that means that this can be handled at a classroom level. So there's just more to this particular issue. I just want to bring up really quick that, you know, the whole reason this was brought, you know, to our attention is, what's really changed, if you ask people that have been in education, is we are seeing a different child today than we have three years and five years and even 10 years ago, that the challenges that students have that come in through our doors, that would have normally not been an issue for educators, but because it is impacting their educational program socially and academically, now more than ever before, it now becomes, it falls on schools to be able to provide solutions. I take to heart the...you know, this was supposed to be, you know, this was an equity issue to level the playing field, to have our increased staff so that we had that availability and equitability at each of our schools. And so to hear that there, you know, is a feeling of inequity, we just want to make sure that we address that because that's not why people were brought on, some additional staff. We want to be equitable, and so I want to talk more about that so that we can bring you that information and share with you what these people are doing. share with you what these people are doing, you know, how they're doing, like, we want to collect that for you and share that with you. We run a really tight ship. And I think we've made a lot of reductions over the last eight years and we've, we've really tightened up our staffing, we've put in really tight processes. So it, we just want to make sure that we're able to share that with you with whatever data that you're looking for, whether it's by need or by case or by numbers of discipline, whatever that is, I want to have that conversation with the board so that we can share that with you on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, someone had pulled V.
He is separate.
No, we're doing everything individually. We're doing.
Oh.
Dr. Stern, Dr. McCop, who wanted to make a comment on this on L, and also I only have a motion for this, Marcus, on L, I do not have a second.
I'll second.
She did have a second on L.
And Rochelle McCop wanted to make a public comment on L. And I also have.
Mr. Tavon.
Tavon.
Dr. Tavon is in the waiting room. He is here on.
Yes.
Okay, can we first get a second then for L? All, okay, so all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Again, that was for L. Okay, next.
Dr. McCop wanted to make a public comment on, on any of these L and A's.
Hi. I just wanted to give a little anecdote of why a mental health professional in a high school or middle school hanging out is really important or providing services. You have a lot of kids who are bullied, who are, something happened socially and they're going to check out. They want to go home because they're not feeling good, they walk out. If they have somebody there, and I've seen this multiple times in this district, because I know a lot of kids in this district, that person there keeps them in school. That person there lets them go home and not fall apart and is okay with going back to school. So I, you know, I, maybe Laura can clarify, but I think the people that I know using these, this therapeutic services, it's not like a private practice or their own therapist, it's they're going through a crisis, there is a social situation, whatever's going on, academic, social, and they have their person for a little bit. I don't think it's as consistent, that's what I understand, it's not as consistent as if they were to have, you know, outside therapy, but they know they have their person so they can show up to school and not leave. And that's what I've seen with the kids who utilize these services. And the ones who utilize the services at school could also have an outside, you know, team as well, but school is so hard. Could be academic stuff, learning, you know, disabilities, social stuff. This generation has the highest, you know, depression rates, anxiety rates, suicidal thoughts, attempts, and I think having that person there, maybe, maybe we're just lucky, we're lucky to have that person so that kid can stay in school and think it out instead of go to the bathroom and do things, so, or go home and do things. So I just, I kind of wanted to just put that out there because I know that's how some of the kids, can't say all, are using those amazing services that the district has brought in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Should we call on Mr. Tavon then on Zoom? To?
I think.
Or should we?
Question, do we want to just hold him off?
I think talking about a different issue.
Fourth grade comes back online?
Okay, Dr. Tavon, if you don't mind, we will, we will circle back to you, we are still working through our consent calendar.
I make a motion to pass item M.
I'll, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve item N, like Nancy.
I'll second. All in favor?
That was the one we just did.
No, I did M.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
She did M, okay.
Okay, I thought my second.
But you second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. So I think the next one we tabled was.
R.
R, okay. I make a motion to approve item R.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve item S.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I think that was it for those, right?
Now we have V.
V.
Oh, yeah, then V, okay.
Yeah, thank you so much. So.
Let me make a motion.
Oh, sure.
Make a motion for the approval of agreement with demographic study and student population with total school solutions.
Thank you.
I need a second.
I just want a second because I almost want to pull it, so that's why I want to discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, let's talk about it.
Okay.
So I had pulled this item, I actually was the one who had requested some information about going forward, and so I appreciate the time that you took in this regard. But then I realized that I had never seen the demographic study from 2022 and also that that was performed by a different consultant. And so I just thought that maybe we could recap it and maybe we could save a few dollars by going back to that consultant and asking them to kind of update their previous study instead of having this new consultant perform a new one. But maybe you have a reason for going in this route, which I'm more than happy to listen to.
So we, we, well, that's enough. We, we went out for multiple, we looked at different types of bids for which demographic report would work for us. And the bids that we asked for different rates from everyone, including the previous consultant, we only received from Total School Solutions and Davis Demographics. I've worked with both, Total School Solutions and Davis Demographics in the past, and they both provide reliable data. In this occasion, Total School Solutions was much, was less than the other amounts and they provide pretty accurate information. The reason why we need this, just, it's, it's good for the district to always, you know, continuously do this, not every year, maybe every other year, especially a district like Beverly Hills, especially, you know, with Beverly Hills One and everything else, like, as soon as all that starts happening, it, you know, you'll get more accurate counts of where your students are. One really big thing that we need right now is some trending, and because of the different developments that have been announced, we want that to be rebanked so that we can use that for our facilities master plan. So that's going to be needed and also in the future for like modernization eligibility to revenge that as well, that's going to be helpful for that type of data. So we did look at the previous consultant and again, we, that's what we received.
Got it. So in your opinion, this is advisable to pass through this report?
Yes, yes, it's something that's going to help us in multiple fronts, from being able to make the decisions at the facilities master plan to just basic decisions that we need to make year after year for staffing and things of that nature. So it's, it's really helpful to us to continuously do that. Other districts might not do it every two years, but with the changing, changes that are happening in Beverly Hills, it just makes a lot of sense to do it at this point.
Thank you. And I saw that also they'll be presenting a draft for all of us to review before finalization.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
No, of course, we wanted to make sure that you all saw the information and any questions that you all had.
Thank you. And, and also if you can, there's no rush, but if you can share the 2022 version, the report with me, I would love to see it.
Oh, of course, I'll, I'll send that over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that is the end of our consent items. We have our student board member report. Well, I thought we would do that. Okay. So Remi, we are very excited and. He's, yep.
Oh, wow, welcome.
There's also a little bit of a delay too, once you do share, so just.
Okay. We'll give this a few moments and worse comes to worse. You could try to give us your report without sharing the Zoom, I don't know if that is possible, but it looks like we might be able to.
Here we go, it's coming up on my screen.
Okay, so, and there is a delay, as you noted. Ah, there we go, okay, bravo. Student board report.
Yes. So with the student board report, on Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, Just in Case Beverly Hills hosted an emergency preparedness fair at Greystone Mansion, and it aimed to enhance community engagement and readiness for emergencies. And many of our Beverly Hills High School students participated as volunteers, contributing to the success of the event by assisting with various activities and helping to educate the attendees on emergency preparedness. As you can see, their names are also listed on the bottom and that's the flyer and some of the things that they did. Also, KBEF, our news broadcasting station, received gold in state, but now they just received silver and nationals. And the school set, they made, they made school and state records and competed in the video news production category. It was located in Atlanta, Georgia, and this was the first time any team in California has made it to top three. So it's a proud honor and acknowledgement for KBEF to complete such a goal and set many records for us and made our school look very prestigious in our KBEF program and made our students proud of what they've accomplished and hopefully they will accomplish more next year as well. And the teen advisory committee, or TAC, is a committee that meets monthly with Beverly Hills Community Services Department staff to generate ideas, identify problems, suggest solutions, to plan programs and events for their peers in the community. And on June 18th and the 25th, BVMS and BHHS students all participate, or all, the majority of students who participated in TAC, and they were presented to the Beverly Hills City Council and the City of Beverly, Beverly Hills Recreation and Parks Commission, where they were recognized and awarded certificates for the community service. So yes, this program involves a lot of commitment to it and many of the BHHS students and BVMS students, which I'm pretty sure is the first time BVMS students are allowed in the program. So it's, it's great to see the different grade levels get along with each other and work together to collaborate and reach all these goals and advance. And thank you.
All right, so we usually go around, say a few things. Noah?
You're just slamming it right off the bat. Oh, loving it. Didn't expect that. Well done. I think all on brand, right, Rebecca? All on brand, you got the stark and stamp of approval, good job.
Thank you.
You hit a home run. Nice job.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard, looking forward to more such reports.
Yes, very good, very good, I enjoyed it and I liked seeing the pictures and recognizing some familiar faces as well, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Great.
I have one more question.
Are you at all participating in that leadership conference of board members that, up in Santa Barbara, did you heard about that one? Did we, did you get notice of that, or is that during the summer? They have the, usually a, are you familiar?
Yeah, I mean, every time I get those, I, I send them on, but I'm not sure if that, within the last few weeks.
Having one, I mean, that's why I'm just, I don't know, I haven't seen anything, I just want.
They typically do, it's typically, it's in the fall usually, so, because people are traveling during the summer, but there will be a lot of experiences and, and besides my opportunity to say, great report, because that was phenomenal, is that Remi and I had a chance to meet over the summer and so, and we met our first meeting over at El Rodeo, where he went to elementary school. So it was just nice to be able to meet there and we were able to, you know, give a tour and get a perspective of a former student walking through El Rodeo, it was really exciting. And so one thing we did talk about is like, there's a lot of opportunities for student board members and leadership that happen through the state and also through LA County, and that I will be sending those to him.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have Dr. Breggy's report.
Great, thank you very much. So just a quick, happy Fourth of July to everybody, hope everybody had a great weekend. There are many staff that are out enjoying summer, but we have a lot of staff here in the district that are reporting every day. And so that was a nice break and weekend for the staff here, but to our community, hope everybody had a great and safe Fourth. I do want to take just a couple of minutes, I don't want this to turn into like the olden days when you're showing slides of your family vacation. But I have shared with you that I had a really great opportunity from the Jewish Federation of Los Angeles and just want to share with you just a little bit about this opportunity for me. And many of you know that this is, I think, now year 11 of being a superintendent in the North Shore area and then eight years now here in, in California. We're just the, the, being in a predominantly Jewish community and just being in two communities that have really opened their arms and embraced me as their superintendent. And so just, just naturally and authentically, I've become more accustomed to and, and exposed to working in a predominantly Jewish community. And so this was, you know, after learning for so many years and attending events and weddings and bar mitzvahs, over a hundred, that, that was really great and I keep learning, but this is an opportunity to really go to a deeper level for me to understand the connection that our community has with Israel. And so I had this opportunity along with 22 other educators. And you can see in that bottom picture on the left-hand side, Dr. Shelton, who's superintendent in Santa Monica, Malibu, and then there's a board member from Bellflower there in the middle, and then myself, and just the variety of people that are educators that were able to go on this trip was pretty incredible. This is just some pictures of being at the Dead Sea. It, it was not a vacation, you know, this was an opportunity for me to deepen my understanding of the Jewish culture, you know, and the strength and connection to profound heritage and learning opportunity for me was just really expansive. And so we had, we, not only the top sites, but it was more about the relationship building that I had with Israeli leaders, but also some Palestinian leaders and how they're working together and their educational system. This is just a picture of attending where the Nova Music Festival was. And I just, I have to tell you that in my entire life, I've never had such a moving experience, knowing how horrific this tragedy was on these, in these pictures, being in this place at this time was the most emotional experience that I've ever had. There is, there is no sound to this, but I, I just, this was stepping off of our, our bus and actually seeing where this attack from Hamas and this, like graveyard. And we spoke to people that were survivors of this incident, some that, that ran to the safe rooms, which are really not safe rooms. And so we talked about how just the terminology, the vernacular of using, you know, running to places where, with, with a safe room that typically, they don't have doors on them, like, this is a place to run when you hear rocket or missile fire, and then only to have a ground attack, where you're hiding for safety only for a ground attack. only for a ground attack to come in. And this is just a very emotional and incredible moving experience to be there, knowing that, that there were hundreds of people. Like this was a surprise attack that, you know, took people that were there for, for all the good reasons, you know, listening to music and being together with friends and family. And for that to happen and to be there and talk to survivors was a pretty incredible experience, just to get a better understanding of what happened. And to really, for myself, get a better understanding of that for people connected to Israel, that these were just not just names. This is family, and this is what two people connected to Israel and our people in our own committee, our own community are connected to. We had every day, the 10 days that I was there, it was jam-packed meetings, whether we were meeting with survivors or learning more about the importance of Holocaust education, that it was from an education perspective. And so that's what really changed things for us, that why this was kind of a work trip was because it was really about the dialogue and participation from our membership as a group with these leaders from Israel, from educational institutions, and, and really from people to help us understand why it's important to have like the Holocaust education and being part of our curriculum and when and where, and that type of support and the number of resources that we have. But there was this deep sense of purpose that, that really reflected upon the work that we do here and the work that I do as a superintendent, where my job is to really ensure that every family and student is known, heard, respected. And this gave me this opportunity to, to really see life from a different perspective and to see that more than just some of the religious divides or political divides, it's about people and how people are surviving and how people are working together to provide what we're doing here. And that is the excellence in education that they're trying to do there based on all of the challenges that they are having as a small country. Just phenomenal. Everywhere we went, we were treated well. It was really surprising that there is such a lack of tourism right now, that there was, when we were at the Holocaust Museum, there's nobody there. Nobody is there because people are not traveling. And that is a concern to the economy, but it's just, it's when you're walking around, and we were walking streets of Jerusalem, and people should be out at restaurants and should be, and you know, and it was, it was just some of the locals and not people that, that come to a country that is thriving. And so hopefully, that's going to come back. And I think that they are optimistic that that will happen. But it did give us an opportunity to kind of, you know, go into some people's homes. So like for Shabbat dinner, we were all separated, and we all went to different homes. And so I was invited into a home where, you know, I was able to meet the entire family. We went through an entire traditional Shabbat dinner, and it was just really, it gave me the opportunity to ask questions and to get a better understanding of what occurred. But that, that sense of family and that sacred time was, it was just, it's something that is very difficult to describe. Every day was with a different group and a lot of the educational institutions that we went to. We talked about their challenges. We talked about how they're delivering education, the technology that they have. We were in elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and also the post-secondary colleges and universities that are trying to attract students to, to come and engage in their programming. And really just a chance to meet and talk to people that are going to school there, teachers that are going to school there. We had panels of parents that talked about what was most advantageous about the, the schools and about the curriculum and about the parent relationships. And so, you know, we had this opportunity to just really kind of really get together as a group. We just, we're really binded together by the sense of belief in family and the responsibility that we have as leaders to ensure that we are meeting the needs of, you know, all of our, all of our students and families here. It was just such a privilege to be part of this group. We became very close. We rescheduled reunion dinners because it's not just an event. Like this is an ongoing relationship that we have with a group that's able to provide us with any resource that we need. And for me, knowing and understanding like how we can start to deliver our education and to share resources about the Holocaust education, they were really impressed with what we were doing. So that was part of the mission too, was we were bringing what we were doing in our school districts. And what we're doing has benefited so many other school districts because I was able to share, as I've shared in some of my previous reports, about this is what we're doing in each school, so each grade level. And so they could not believe what we were doing. But then there were also people there to say, look, you can, you can, it's not about doing more, it's about being deeper and in sharing the, a deeper commitment to our community. And so we were able to do that, share that. And the connections and resources that I have now for our staff and our administrators that I didn't have before, made every minute of this trip worth it. So some other sites there, there's like a safe room, it just, which they're everywhere. They're everywhere. It's a completely different way of life, and it's a different way of thinking about safety. And, and to be able to talk to people that, that live there, it was just a remarkable experience. So I just want to say thank you to the Jewish Federation of Los Angeles for selecting me to be part of this journey that's going to continue, this conversation, this dialogue, you know, that gave me a different insight as a superintendent that I did not have before. And it just learning about the coexistence that's happening, the, the very difficult political society that Israelis are having to move through and those challenges, and to keep their focus on kids and education is pretty remarkable. So I'm just very grateful for that. It's given me something that, that I hadn't had before, which is a more of a global perspective of my job. And so every minute was something that I've taken something away from and such a great reflection. A lot of parents I've seen already out when I'm walking my dog and I'm at home. And if Al asked me, so I'm happy to share stories with you. I just want to give you a brief overview and just let you know how much I appreciated the support in attending. And there's, there's lots of work ahead of us, but I feel better positioned to do that work. Just a couple of slides, really quick, just about some of the things coming up. We've talked about the Early Childhood Center. And so that work is going to be kicking in again when we're back to school in the fall. But I'm often asked to do things and speak like the municipal, it's the municipal. League. And so meeting, speaking at some of these events, I want to do a better job of letting people know about that. Been asked to speak at Rotary. Mrs. Manichari and I are Rotarians. And so, you know, I have an opportunity, they've asked me to speak a little bit about just the opening of, reopening of El Rodeo and a little bit about Hawthorne as far as, you know, what, what's next for Hawthorne. So I have that going to be coming up in the next couple of weeks. And then if something, the great celebration that's right before us, and that's the, this grand opening of El Rodeo, and we're very excited about that. And so again, it's on August 11th, 11:00 AM, and it's really going to be a spectacular event. There's not many school districts in the country that, that have this opportunity we have right in front of us. And that is to, you know, unveil and reopen this brand new facility. And so this is, this is, this is for the next 100 years. So this is, we're really excited about that. And I can't underestimate just, you know, being part of this. This is not just for El Rodeo students and parents. This is a community success in our construction and our remodeling and our bond program. We just hope as many people as possible are willing to come out and celebrate with us. So just a couple of highlights is talking about with, you know, the first time in almost 100 years that this is, you know, El Rodeo Elementary School. And so that's historic. And so, you know, through some of our branding, you know, our next chapter begins in 2024. And as we're moving in currently, lots of celebrations and successes. But we do ask, follow along, you know, with Instagram at er.bhusd. Lots of information, communication coming across. Some other things with communication that we're doing. And hopefully, you are following our Instagram at Beverly Hills Unified. We are updating, redesigning websites. We're, we're posting more information. The board had asked for, you know, like, we want to know more about when great things are happening, like shade structures at schools. And, you know, even we're putting fresh coats of paint on certain areas. It's been a very busy summer. We're sharing that all with you, so please be part of our, our Instagram site. And we have our, our project series that's going on. We're documenting our move from Hawthorne to El Rodeo. And so please be a part of that by pictures and through social media. And lastly, I know that there were some, some questions. Dr. Seaman is on vacation this week. But many of us on the cabinet and principals and just teachers in our district that have worked in other districts with an avid program, there were some questions just to, to ensure that, that we're being clear about information that's being sent out. So I just wanted to touch upon a few points. This is my last slide, but I just want you to know that like, because this is a new program, we're getting a lot of questions, and that's good. Questions are good. We're also in a community where people don't want to feel like they've missed out on an opportunity. So I know that there's been some questions from parents saying like, I'm not sure if my student should be, my child should be involved in this or not. It is a new program. That's why we're getting questions. We're happy to answer them. But this is a really unique targeted group. So, you know, this is really designed for that middle group of kids. Like this is that group of kids, we're launching it for next year, just in eighth and ninth grades. But there's several factors here that is really important for people to know. And that's why this is kind of this targeted group that, that falls in the middle, that needs a little bit extra support, whether it's, you know, how they're writing notes or how they feel about taking a more challenging class. It's really tailored for students from a diverse background. It's really tailored for students that, that are more about being that first year in, in your family for someone to attend college. We've often talked about how important it is through our, through our rankings. And I don't want to, I don't want to make this sound like this is a strategy to increase US News and World Report rankings, because that's not. It's, but we do have some students that, that many don't feel like they have the, the confidence to go right into a four-year school. And so this is also targeting that group as well, where these are students that are thinking about that. They're not sure if that's a good fit for them, that this is extra support. And it takes the, the place of an elective area. And their support, there's mentors that come in. And this is a program, it's a national program. This is not a, you know, a one-size-fits-all. This is a nationally recognized program that helps move that group of kids that are in the middle to push themselves to take more challenging classes and then ultimately, at the end of the day, to then apply and be accepted into four-year universities. So I know that there's been some questions about, you know, who's getting contacted about this and who isn't. And, and so I wanted to be a little bit more clear just about, you know, in bringing some, some points from Dr. Seaman's other presentations back into kind of the middle of the summer here, that this is a program really targeted for a certain group of kids. And, and we'll be providing you with data as we go along as this program starts here. But many of us have been part of avid programs in my former district. We were a destination site for the avid program for other school districts to come view. We all bring some expertise or experience into this program. So I'm happy to answer any questions for you. And that is my report. Thank you.
Remy, would you like to start?
Yeah, I believe it was a great opportunity for you to go to Israel and see all the unique, different aspects of what like Israel is like currently and at this time, and see like the understanding and emotional aspect of it as well. And El Rodeo opening up is such a magnificent, magnificent thing. Like for me, as being an alumni at El Rodeo and seeing now how like different it's become. And it's very unique to the district and, or the school out of various other schools, because like you said, it's unveiling our school again, but even better than it was before. And, and I'm also looking forward to the avid program, and I believe it will really help our students reach their academic success and make our school and our students look great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Margot? No, you're good. Ms. Manichari?
Thank you. Actually, first I wanted to welcome you, Remy. I'm sorry I didn't say it earlier, but it's such a pleasure to have you here, and we want you here. And so I hope you will not hesitate to ask questions, even though it seems like you already hit the ground running. And Dr. Bregge, thank you for your report and for taking the time to make that educational mission happen. I'm sure it was exhausting. And I also went on a similar program in college to UCLA, as a student at UCLA to Israel. And I actually was, it was educational as well. And I was floored by how diverse it is because there are Jews Israelis, Arab Israelis, Ethiopian Israelis. And so it's really great to see that you had, you know, an opportunity to visit the Middle East and see how things are over there. And hopefully, you can continue to share with us. I'm sure things are going to keep coming up.
Oh, absolutely.
So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Ms. Marcus?
A few things. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the report that you shared on your trip to Israel. That was fantastic. I know when you first told me about the opportunity, all I said was, you go. I didn't, I didn't hesitate. I didn't fact that you were going to be gone first. Well, it didn't matter to me. You go, period. That's the best thing you could have probably done, and you probably will remember this for your whole lifetime.
Hundred percent.
So I, and what you will learn and will be able to share with us and so on is going to be amazing. I just wanted to share that first time and the only time that Eddie and I, my husband, went to Israel was many, many years ago. And I can only tell you, the moment we landed on the, in Tel Aviv, the moment I felt like I was home. It was my home, and it was something that was very emotional for me. So I can only tell you that I am glad that you were able to feel a little bit a part of what we experience as Jews. So thank you. I have some questions about Avid. First of all, it's only going to be in the eighth and ninth grade. Are there plans to expand it in going forward to 11th and 12th grade?
Yes, yes.
Do we feel that that's the most time to hit the kids or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really good practice to roll the program out. There are a number of mentors that commit. So it's, you don't want to start out so big that you're struggling to get people to come in and help.
Well, I noticed that in, and I was one that brought this up. I wanted people to understand. They, the program, you will lose an elective in doing this program, and this will affect kids who like sports programs and also have an elective. So this is, it's going to be a little bit of a problem how we can adjust that to allow them to maybe have both. I don't know how it can be done. But I think that that's something I want to consider myself.
Yeah, I don't look at it as like losing an elective because it's such a valuable time. It is, right, it becomes another choice, I think, for, for our students.
But it deprives them of, say, if they wanted to do art or music or something, and they only have so many electives during the day, they have to make a decision. And if that's the one, I mean, we hope that they'll use it, but unfortunately, they have to make a choice, and that's part of life, I know.
Yeah, there, there is a choice. It, it really is an opportunity, though, the, the life skills that, that and, and the opportunity to, to be able to work with people so that you, you know, this could be like a student that has never taken an AP class. You know, so there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of. AP class, you know? So they, there, there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of curriculum and there's a lot of support. Um, because that's, we want kids to, we always say this, we always say, you know, like work to your fullest potential. We say that, but yet, how do we do that? You know, and how do we make you comfortable? And it's a shift for some of our staff too. So that, yeah, because we want kids that are, that are, are, are willing to say, look, I could, I could take this class or I could take this AP class and challenge myself a little bit. And, you know, and some people are just afraid to do that.
Well, the only thing that I'm worried about is that it could impact the numbers in some of those classes also and whether we would, you know, it could do that also. Uh, also I want to clarify, if a parent thinks that their child is eligible for the program, can they reach out or do they have to wait till someone reaches out to them? I mean, in other words, uh, if you have a parent who would like to find out about the program and they think their kid may qualify, uh, do they, if they don't get an invitation, does that mean that they can't get?
Yeah. I mean, a, a parent can always ask and, and could say, you know, is this appropriate for, you know, my child? I, that, that's, those, that communication, that's, that's always open. Um, but I think that, like, this is not the program for somebody who is already experiencing success in some of our, right. So I, but I think if a, a parent calling and asking is an absolute valid, you know, like, is this, is this a good program for my student?
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you for starting the program.
Sure. You bet.
So very happy to hear that you had a good, meaningful experience in Israel and you came back safe and sound.
I wanted to stay.
I'm sure you did. But, um, it speaks volumes of you that you were willing to go there because there's definitely some people who I think, you know, for good reason, might have turned down the opportunity, given what's going on there. I myself would be nervous to travel over there. So I really, um, I really am grateful. Uh, I know it was not a vacation because some of the things you shared were definitely very, um, heart wrenching to see. Um, I can't imagine what it would be like to be at the site of that massacre, um, which was really not so long ago, actually. Um, and, uh, I, I think that's great. Did you learn any Hebrew?
Um, yeah, actually we have a little book that we put together of like all our words that we, yeah, so I, learning it. And, um, and I do want to say, like, there, there were some times where I was a little bit afraid. Like, we did hear rocket fire. We did hear, like, we were two miles from the Gaza border. And so it was, you know, the reality really struck there. Like, as far as, you know, this, this is this war zone. But it was remarkable. And Mrs. Manishari, you just said this. So like it, it, it hit me that, you know, knowing the, the, the lack of history of knowledge that we had about, like, you know, Ethiopian Jews and, you know, it was the, you know, Russian Jews. And it's just like this group of like this, this society of like, you know, people that are like, oh, wait, and there's Arab Jew, like, and this, they get people that identify as Palestinian, but they're Israeli citizens. And that is, my mind is blown at, at just that, that's all happening and people are working with each other and, and how educational leaders are having to like work together so that that political divide is not there for kids. Like, it, that was remarkable.
In terms of Avid, um, I'm really happy that our district has, uh, taken note of this great program and adopted it. I know a lot of our, our peer, um, districts make use of Avid. I think that one thing that is missing in a lot of schools in general is just the higher order skills that we, that kids need to succeed. So, you know, a lot of people are aware of executive functioning and, but do they know what that means? And that you can have a kid who's, you know, pretty bright, but he or she just can't get it together, can't pull it together to be successful. Another kid who maybe doesn't have as high of an aptitude, but man, they put in that grit and they work and they work and they succeed and they get straight A's. So we, that exists. And I, I love that Avid, if I understand correctly, um, bridges the gap for some of those kids who need this extra help. In talking to Dustin, I believe he said it is open to all eighth and ninth graders now. Um, it, so, but yes, you have to be appropriate fit for it.
Right, right. Yeah. But, but that's why, like, if, if somebody feels like, you know, somebody was overlooked or somebody, there was communication that was sent out so that parents could, could do that. And the one thing I just want to, um, just reiterate that it was really important that you said is, you know, that, that ability or that, that feeling of like that you can do something. And, um, you know, we have a goal that we'd like to improve and increase the number of kids that are taking an AP class. Like, this is exactly the mechanism, like this, this group of kids, getting them ready to, like, some kids without this program, they would never even think about doing that. But this is to help guide and say, you know what, you can do this. And that's one way we're trying to get to a goal where it's like expose yourself to at least one AP class while you're here in Beverly.
Right. So I think that's great. And thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Okay. So with that.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the 2024-25 management confidential unrepresented salary schedule.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the rejection of the claim number 640352.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I'll make a motion for the continuation of existing interdistrict attendance permits pursuant to our board policy and AR regulation 5117 for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I need to list the cap amount on that?
Yes.
So the cap staying at zero, correct?
What is that?
A hundred, I believe.
The cap, I have a few questions on this one.
Do we have a second on that?
All second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions on this.
Sure.
Just because, you know, I, I want to make sure that it's accurate. Um, so, starting at the top of 5117 in, in our district attendance, um, so I noticed that this is an, this is an annual renewal.
Yes.
Okay. So the first item is for the children of, and I'm going to take a step back. My understanding is we have over 3,000 students at BH USC. And currently of those 3,000 less, this applies to less than 5%, which is 143. And so we have 61 district employee students, 26 City of Beverly Hills employee students, 42 grandparent permit students, nine homeless and five seniors.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so in my math, that adds up to less than 5%. When I was reviewing the, um, policy, I was worried that maybe we're, it's not, um, consistent with our commitments. And so let me walk you through that.
Okay.
Okay. So children of individuals employed by BHUSD, as far as I know, that's consistent with our, um, union agreement. So no problem there. Then children of individuals employed by City of Beverly Hills, I don't have an issue with that. My only concern is that, um, pursuant to our JPA, that's actually a three-year commitment.
I don't think that this is.
Or maybe that's not.
That's not part of the JPA.
It, no, it is.
It is.
It, it is. I, I think because there's like, it, there's an understanding that that agreement will always be in place.
Yes. But I just want to make a notation that this isn't, um, like a rollover annual agreement, but that's a three-year, uh, commitment.
Yeah. It's one of the reasons why this is done every year.
But Judy, yeah, this vote is only for a year. So the JPA exceeds this vote.
Yes.
That's what it always does.
Yes. Okay. And then for the, um, for the grandparents, um, this was already approved back in November.
Right. This is not, we've not.
This is not a vote that we're taking right now. It's a.
Right.
I think we voted to approve it.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Then I was just curious to learn about the children of active military duty. Does that mean that any, um, military family can come to BHUSD, whether or not they live in Beverly Hills and say, hi, I'd like to send my child to your school district?
No, Mrs. Manishari, this is, this is, um, this is actually a state and federal law. If they are deployed and their children are living with family members in Beverly Hills, their, their child can attend Beverly Hills schools.
Okay. So it's.
And that's, that's a mandate by the state of California and the federal government.
Got you. So there's also a residency component to that one?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And then going back up to number three, the grandchildren of grandparents, um, that one is subject to our, that's finite and it's subject to availability. So I just want to make sure that that's.
Right.
Clear?
Yes.
Is that clear?
Subject to availability and the board only approved a maximum of 100 permits district wide.
For item, for item three?
Yes. Of which we have, I believe, you said 42.
Yes.
Is what we have right.
Okay.
Um, and yes. And so we have 42 of the 100 slots already taken.
Thank you. And this is for the year going forward, 24 or 25?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
It's our current, currently enrolled students who are rolling over for the next school year.
Thank you so much. And then for the, for the last one.
Can I, can I just get some, I want to be clear, because we, we haven't done grandparent permits yet for the year.
Okay.
So I just want to, since Ms. Collins-Williams is on the phone, that this, I don't want this to come back as a technicality because we, we haven't processed grandparent permits yet for this year.
New ones or, of new ones?
So the 42 is a rollover and then there could be potentially more.
Right. And it would be reported then the next year.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Up to the 100 spots.
Yes.
Understood. And within the other parameters.
Right.
Yes.
I'm with you. Thank you. And then, um, for item five, I found this to be interesting too, because we don't have, does this mean from one school to the next?
So, yeah. So this is, this is kind of the extreme version. And, and Ms. Collins-Williams and I have, uh, you know, if, if there is, um, you know, a student that, um, has been determined that there's a victim, like, that we can work within our, our own selpa to, well, even with our own selpa, we can, um, you know, there is a provision to be able to provide a, a space where somebody feels, um, like they're safe. So this could be this extreme, you know, if there's a victim or active bullying, um, you know, we, we could give them interdistrict attendance. Um, um, you know, we're small, so we're, you know, it's, it's, you know, keeping them here or we have something where we could, a student can go into another district. But, um, you know, we, that's that provision that's, that it's, it's never utilized really, but it's, this is why the selpa stays together.
But it could help our student too.
It works. Yeah.
For our students.
Yes.
Can I just say something, Judy? Um, one of the things about this particular, this is the continuation of the existing policy and regulation that's in place. And as I was going through the, this one is the one that we are going to be going over to when we go through the policies to actually address this one. So this is just what's existing right now. So I, okay, I just, we're not changing it right now.
Yeah. Okay. Then the question that I had was, um, the next one, all such applications are accepted throughout the year, no window. I just wanted to clarify because the grandparent permit, there is a window.
So I can take that one, Dr. Breggy. So we do have, we do have a window on the website. Um, that came after we talked about the policy. Um, so that'll be something that we need to clear up, clear up when we, when we, um, do the revision of the 5,000 policies and, and whatever the, however the board wants to proceed, um, that's fine. Um, I can, I can provide some data on when we receive the max, the most, um, applications. Um, we did receive a few throughout the year, um, but it's also subject to the other parameters, you know, space availability, all that kind of, uh, all those things as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And just one more thing for background and clarity, um, Mrs. Manishari. Um, uh, we do this annually and this is part of, uh, the district being a basic aid district or community funded district because we don't have interdistrict permits. So we have to clarify what permits we have and what, where the source of, of the permits come from.
Thank you.
I believe we didn't hold a vote for 12A. Okay. So without further, if no further questions or discussion, all in.
Just remind everybody that we will be visiting this policy and regulation when we do the 5,000. That's, I mean, uh, that huge folder that Laura.
Yes.
The binder.
I had to take them out of the folder because it was too heavy to hold.
It, it's a lot. And so it.
And that was only half.
Right. And that's because we're, we're in summer, but you're right. That's up for review.
Right. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So before we get started with our discussion of fourth grade class size, I'd like to see if our public commenter, um, Dr. Taban is available?
Yes, I'm, I'm available.
Hello. We can hear you.
Yes.
Cannot yet see.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you. There we go. We see you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is it, can I talk?
Yes. And you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, everybody for listening in. We, we wanted to be there physically, but unfortunately we're in Europe right now. It's, it's 4:00 AM. Uh, this is very important for us. We have two daughters, uh, aged nine and six. Um, we live on 608 North Bethford. We lived there for seven years. My, our kids have been going to Jewish school. Um, but we want to make a change for several reasons. We want to have it, uh, we want them to be exposed more with diverse, uh, um, school population. Um, and also logistically, I work, I'm a physician, I'm a archeoplastic surgeon on 9735 Wilshire Boulevard. So also work in Beverly Hills. That's only three blocks away from El Rodeo. So our school, our home is three blocks away. We want to, I want to be involved in the school activities more often. Uh, my wife works, it just logistically makes us, it makes it so much easier for our kids to be able to walk to, to school. And also our six-year-old is going to be starting first grade. I think it's a great time for also, for her to start, start in the school system. Um, we're also building a house on 803 North Bethford, which it's, it's so expensive, so many fees. So financially is another reason we're also making this change as well. Uh, so there are a lot of reasons we, we, we absolutely want our kids to be able to walk to the school in three blocks from our home. We want to be involved in the, in the school activities. We have a lot of friends that go to, um, went to Hawthorne to go, they're going to El Rodeo. Um, so we, we are really hoping that this, this can be made possible. Uh, we know, you know, that this just, it, it, logistically, I mean, there are people who come from other side of Beverly Hills, go to El Rodeo. And for us to go to Horseman, it just, it just doesn't work. We don't, we don't, my wife, like, I work very, very hard, very busy. My wife works. It makes it very hard for us to do that commute. So, but again, we're really hoping that this can be made possible for our two daughters, um, going to first, first grade and fourth grade to be able to go to El Rodeo.
Thank you so much. And we appreciate you getting up at the wee hours to speak with us and hope you enjoy the rest of your vacation.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, uh, we have put on the agenda to discuss, um, fourth grade class size. Um, I wanted to open it up a little bit and, um, actually ask, uh, Dr. Breggy, um, if you can give us a little overview. I, I don't want to divorce the issue of the behavior that has come up. I do feel, um, it has, it is perhaps more, um, uh, problematic or severe than, than in other cases I've heard. Um, it is part of this discussion, but I do think that going about to dismantle, I guess I'm done. My time's up. Uh, they are interrelated, but in some ways, the way that ultimately I would propose to, um, resolve the behavioral problems is not necessarily due to class size. There are other resources that, that we want to look at. However, if you could please give us some of your, your thoughts, Dr. Breg.
Sure. So, I mean, I, I do think that it is, um, you know, this is brought to our attention. So this is, you know, a, a concern of ours. And so, um, as Ms. Collins-Williams said earlier, we're already putting together kind of a, a 360 plan that does involve parents, but also support, uh, for, uh, from our behavior specialists, um, and, uh, our teachers and our administrator. So it's, it's really going to be a concentrated effort. And so it's going to be really clear to students and families now that we're aware that there is a, if there's behavior concerns, like, like that, as Mrs. Marcus said, like, she's going to be watching. She's going to be, so that, we're going to be really, you know, on top of that and, and providing support, um, for families, uh, for our teachers too, for classroom management. And everyone owns a little piece of, if we know that there is, uh, a behavior concern or any other concerns for, uh, a grade level. So I, it's really, it's two separate issues, but it's not that it, any one is any more important. But it's, that is at the highest level of concern now that the board and the administration is aware.
Can I add something to that?
Well, hold on. Before we do it. Um, so at this point, lay the land for us with the fourth grade. We have.
Okay.
My understanding is at El Rodeo, we have, we have three. My understanding is, at El Rodeo, we have, we have three sections, we have twenty-nine, which is the cap, um, we have twenty-nine, and then we have twenty-nine, and then we have twenty-seven with two spots open at El Rodeo, then at Horstman, um, we have, we have three sections, um, there's twenty-nine in one section, twenty-nine in another, the third one, there are twelve, so there are seventeen open spots technically for fourth grade at Horstman.
So, Dr. Stern, what are you referencing right now?
Yeah, that's not-
So, the, the, here's where the, the, the information as of, again, this is so fluid, this, it, it changes sometimes hourly, but fourth grade, uh, based on what I have from, this is from the July fifth, I think this was, um, was the three sections, um, at El Rodeo, and it's, um, uh, there are eighty-five students total, so that would make class sizes twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, which is different from what I had shared with the board earlier, um, because we were at eighty-seven students, because we had twenty-nine in each class, so it's, it's changed, it's like, we, we now, like, two spots that are open in fourth grade.
Okay, so as of now, there are no El Rodeo fourth graders being asked to go to Horstman?
There's two openings.
There, there are, there, yes, because, because this, like I said, this could change instantly, so like, this, the last time I had reported something, we were at eighty-seven students, so it was twenty-nine, 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 so it was, yes, that-
But now we're at eighty-five.
So, as, as of, like, this, when I pulled this data, there's now been in, you know, another opening, so what we do then is, like, once we get these openings, and we had the July fourth, it was, uh, you know, right at this time, is that then you, Student Services goes back, and, and, and Ms. Collins-Williams can speak about this too, that when there are openings like that, we do go back, like, to families, and we do say that, look, there's been a drop in enrollment, there's been, but keep in mind too, that there are-
You go back to the families that are-
Redirected.
El Rodeo that have been redirected.
Yes, because, I mean, we, we, we even, we even work with families to get them on a transfer list immediately, even for the following year, so-
Do you know how many students are in that position right now, that were redirected to Horstman, that you're going back to?
Um, I, I have to look, I think there were, I think there was like two or three.
Okay, and then, sorry, Horstman, just tell us a little bit about the-
Can I ask a question, why is there such an inequality of classes at Horstman, twenty-nine, twenty-nine?
Well, that's why, I just want him to just tell us a little bit about Horstman numbers, and then we continue.
Seventy, correct.
And it, it's like that, so Mrs. Marcus's question, so it's, it's like that, really, for every grade level, like, there's, that, you're never going to get an equal number-
In my opinion, I mean, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-nine and twelve, I mean, that to me is-
No.
No.
Quite alarming.
No.
That's not accurate.
No, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, twelve, no.
No, seventeen spots open at Horstman, right?
Well, Horstman was, yeah, because it was twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-one.
So, at Horstman, like, in, in, the last thing I had here was that there were sixteen open spots, again, that, again, I pulled this, but I haven't had a chance to look at this today, because this-
The only question that I was asking is, if I had that number of students, I would try to make the classes more equal in size than twenty-nine, twenty-nine and twelve, that, that, that I found that-
We don't have that.
Okay, well, that's what I just thought I heard, so-
Okay, no, we don't have twenty-nine, twenty-nine and twelve.
But, but we do have sixteen available.
I think, I think what Dr. Stern was saying, that there is, well, I'm, I'm not sure where the twelve came from, but, um-
Oh, because if you're filling classes to twenty-nine, so then you have, and you have seventy, which is what you, a number you shared with me, I think the last twenty-four.
Yeah, or, like, again, it changes, I have seventy-one here, but yes.
So you shared me seventy, so then-
Yes.
Horstman?
Yes, Horstman, so then you fill a class, twenty-nine, this reminds me of atoms and electrons and-
You're cutting the apple, uh, the, skinning the cat in a different way, it's the same numbers, yes.
Right, okay, so I'm just saying, right, if you were to fill a class to twenty-nine, right, because that's the cap, and you, before you went to another class, and then that's twenty-nine, and then what remains from, from there is, um, is, well, no, twelve and sixteen-
But we don't do that.
Is twenty-eight, right.
We don't do that, we balance out the classes.
Yes.
Yeah, we balance-
She's just saying that there's enough room for us.
Right, right, I, I guess what I'm saying is, filling to capacity, if you did go before you went to the next section, correct?
But, what are the actual numbers, what's the distribution at Horstman right now, do you know, because you gave us the, the number of El Rodeo, I appreciate that.
Yep.
So what's the number of Horstman?
For fourth grade?
Yes.
So, let me see, because I just pulled this.
I heard twenty-nine, twenty-nine and twelve, that's what I heard.
So, for fifth grade-
No, fourth.
I'm sorry, fourth grade is seventy students.
Right, that's what you told me.
So, yeah, because what, because you and I had a conversation after I, the email I sent to the board, so that's, just shows you that, that happens, like, the one student right there, so, um, and this is, I just pulled this right before the board meeting, and, and it's, um, seventy total for fourth grade.
Three sections, and three sections.
And three sections, okay.
So seventy divided by three, so you have twenty-three students per section.
Or one with twenty-four, yeah, so twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-three.
The twenty-seven, the twenty, the twenty-nine was not right, that's all I want to make sure.
Well, it's not that it's-
It's the cap, I mean, if you, but yes, you could, like, with fractions, you could skin it in a bunch of-
That's not the way I, I'm a teacher, and I, the way I understand it is that I am twenty-nine, Judy has twenty-nine, somebody else has twelve, that's what I thought I heard.
No, no, I, I did say that-
That was how Mandy was breaking it down to show what's the differential, but it's going to be evenly distributed among the three classes.
But it is seventy, that is accurate.
Can I say, can I say one thing? First, I want to thank all the parents who have visited with us in the last couple of meetings, um, I've been in your position not too long ago, and it's really hard to come, to come and speak to the board, and, um, to speak in a way that's perceived as being negative, uh, about the school district that you love, and so that's why I always say you can love BHUSD, but, but ask for more and want more from it at the same time, and so, to the parents who have, who have been here, and who have been trying to have their voices heard, I thank you for coming to share with us, because you being here is what helps us do our job, and be better, and know what's on your mind, so, the first thing I want to say is, we're all on the same team, first and foremost, so, thank you for being here, and we want to hear from you. The way I see it, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, I'm seeing three different issues that are intertwined, the first is behaviors, the second is class size, and the third is redirecting families from a homeschool to another school, I'm just going to give you guys my perspective on these three, and I welcome hearing from everybody, on the behaviors, I want to make clear to our community, we had a conversation about this at our strategic plan recap, which we were at, but the, most of the community was not at, this board was and is absolutely clear, that behavior accountability is at the top of our priority list, and the issue that's on your mind is also on our mind, and I want to just put that to rest ASAP, and it's also on Dr. Bregge's mind, and it's also on Ms. Collins-Williams' mind, and so, I welcome you to come back as many times as you feel is necessary, but I will let you know that it is not necessary, because we are on it, and so what I will say about that is, Dr. Bregge, you've touched on a three hundred and sixty approach, and, um, I, I really, what I would like to see is that we hear back about this tangible plan going forward, that's going to be consistently applied, and personally, I would like our high flyers, if possible, to be brought in to El Rodeo from that cohort, the first two weeks of August, so that whoever has been an issue during the third grade that is going to the fourth grade, I would like to have a tangible, concrete plan, and I would like for them to be pulled in, in the first two weeks of August, so they know very clearly what our community expectation is of them, I would like to clarify that it's, it's not exactly clear what the issue is, because it's possible that some of our students are simply having a discipline issue, some of our students might not know how to conflict resolve, some of our students may have other disabilities that are showing themselves up as behavioral problems, and I know that we have the resources for all of that, I just want it to be resolved even before school starts, please, and does anybody up here take issue with that kind of approach, to hit the ground running on August first, so that when our students are in their seats, we've already made progress on it, regardless of how many classes we have?
You could, you could certainly ask-
Yes.
That you can make these students-
Of course.
Be involved, or these families be involved in anything before school starts.
That's right, I understand that, but I, I do think it's good for our families to see that we're committed to it, uh, and it's something that we're going to address as soon as possible.
Yes, and it, there will be a, a full plan, as I had mentioned, uh, previously, that, that, we, we are already working on that plan, and, and thank goodness, we have the resources that we do-
Yes.
So that we are not just drawing on one group, um, so I, you know, from the professional educator perspective, we're going to utilize people who are specialists in areas, but it's also, and again, not to put this on any one person, but there's also the responsibility of our teachers to have the, be highly engaged in the most effective, um, classroom management strategies, and so, we're going to make sure that, that they get that support.
Sure, so-
But then also support from the administrators, but then this is where I'm going to jump over and support, uh, Mr. Margot's, uh, recent statements, uh, over the last several months about, that this is also a responsibility of these parents, and so-
Absolutely agree.
And that's why, when you mentioned, like, the idea about bringing people in, absolut, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, to offer that, but it's also, you know, in, in this worked at the, the BVMS, uh, there were times where Dr. Skan said, look, as a parent, you know, they couldn't make them do that, but it was like, look, we want you to come in and be part of the class, and be, you know, we want you to see what's happening with your child in this classroom, and so, this is at a very heightened alert, so I want you to know, this is not just a, okay, we'll take care of it, we do need to put a written plan together, because if, if somebody is not going to be successful with behavior in an academic environment, then that education has to be provided differently, because it's impacting the other students' education, and that's not fair to them, if they're not able to tap into their educational programming, or be the best, so there is that responsibility, and I like the idea of-
Please.
Like, look, we know who those people are, I'm sure after all of these conversations, that these, these fourth grade families know too.
Yes.
Because it's been a very public thing on chats, people are sending me all kinds of screenshots from chat, so I-
Nip it in the bud.
It's, these families are aware too, so-
And please, um, if you could come back to us on August seventh, and just give us a brief update, I think that would be good for everybody to hear.
Sure, Judy, with all due respect, with behavior like this, there's no nippity in the bud, it's not going to work that way.
I didn't say that it's going to be solved in one day, I just said that the solutions should start on, as soon as possible.
Well, one of the, one of the issues-
Don't you want to see it happen?
Yes, but bringing, okay, so if you bring in the parents and you bring in the kids, the kids, yeah.
I'm putting the, it's not for me to have the solutions, it's, that's Dr. Bregge's expertise, and I trust that he can make it happen, I'm just asking for a tangible plan, and I'm asking-
But it won't be resolved before August seventh, that I can assure you.
I'm not asking for resolution, I think that we need to start our steps on August first, and then that way, when the thirteenth comes along, we're already on our way, I know that children are developing, there are a myriad of issues, I don't think that by August thirteenth it's going to be resolved, I just want to start.
Are you making a suggestion or giving direction, if you're giving direction, we need consensus.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, I'm asking for Dr. Bregge to come up with the plan, and come back to us, and let us know how it's going.
Right, but it has to be at least three of us to direct staff, so-
Do you guys not want Dr. Bregge to get going on this?
Wait, Ms. Collins-Williams, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I hear, I hear and agree with everything that both Mrs. Manicherry said and Dr. Stern said, I also just wanted to remind the board and our, our families in the community watching, that, um, as part of the strategic plan, uh, for Student Services, we developed a district, both district-wide expected behaviors for all students, and a discipline code for all students, and we will be rolling those out in the, in August for all families, so that'll be some of the communication, and part of this three hundred and sixty-degree plan that, that we're developing.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Great.
Michael, is it in the district's purview to, um, relocate students from one elementary school to the next?
Uh, you know, it's not a-
For discipline issues or-
It's not a common practice, but, um-
It's illegal.
There, yes, I mean, there, there, if, if, if a student is not being successful somewhere, like, that is our responsibility, to ensure that we provide, um, an, an educational space where that student can be successful, so that's where we get really creative with the resources, with Student Services, and it, it should be less punitive than it is finding the right educational place, so that that student can be successful.
Okay.
And sometimes the kid-
Just to address your thing, yes, it did happen, when I was teaching, that we did receive students from other schools, who could no longer manage themselves at that school, and they switched them.
Or sometimes they switch classes too, or sometimes, you know, a group of kids can't be together, because they just, you know-
Yeah, switching classes doesn't necessarily, it sounds like in this particular situation, switching classes wouldn't solve the problem.
Right, but if there's like three kids who are particularly, like, you know, get together-
Breaking them up is something you can-
Yes, sometimes that's a strategy, but yes, I mean-
But do we need to go from zero to sixty, can't we, I'm sure there are steps in between.
Uh, oh, absolutely, I mean, but that's why putting a plan together is something that we're already working on, uh, Ms. Collins-Williams and I have had, um, several conversations, uh, at Miss Cabor as well, so, you know, we've got, we've already started to work on, we know what resources are available, and now it's putting those pieces together to have a plan, um, so, I, I'm happy to update the board and the community on the seventh, where we're at, it, but I also want to say too, it's not just for, like, I don't, I don't want to single out the fourth grade class at, at El Rodeo, like, this, this is, these expectations, as Ms. Collins-Williams said, like, that we're, we're putting together expected behaviors for all students, so we're not just, it's just not this class that, you know, has been brought to our attention, like, it's, it's really about all students, but, but to have a behavior plan, knowing that we're aware that there is, you know, a behavior that has to be corrected, that's, that is in our lane to do that, so-
Thank you.
Yes, be happy to update you.
Okay, so I think we're okay on this?
I, I think for now, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not-
I mean, is there any-
If, if the district is, if the district is aware and moving forward with some, um, pre, proactive-
I think that you're planning to try to address the students, you know, you're, you're talking about preschool, and you have, you have issues with bargaining and with-
Staffing or not, yeah.
Union and stuff like that, but I mean, I think that the, the administration is setting in plan, right now, by what I've just heard about the, 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 uh, plan for behaviors, and the, the, what they have to sign and so on, and learning about the fact that how it's going to be handled, I think they're doing that right now.
Great, okay.
And, and we want to see, you know, evidence of, of progressive discipline, not just, oh, it happened again today, right, which is, you know, so, right, we're listening to you, you know, we've heard, had some very educated parents come forward, and we don't want it to be like, oh, you know, it, this happened again, you know, we want to hear, there was a progressive, it was documented, there was progressive discipline, we tried this, that didn't work, and, and then parents come in, and you hear about it.
What we, what we don't want is that this, this kind of targeted group, it's like, becomes then, oh, this is the problem, you know, of, then the following year, fifth grade, or, oh, that group's now going to the middle school, like, we don't want, like, this is the time to correct that behavior.
Please.
Well, it happened from second and third grade, I mean, it started from second into third, and now we're at the fourth grade, so we have to nip it in the bud now, or we, I don't know if we'll ever get on top of it.
The reason I brought it up is because when the families come and they speak in public comment, we as a board are actually not allowed to respond to them, it's just meant for us to listen, and so I just wanted us to acknowledge, you know, the conversations that have been brought to us, and I think we're all on the same page.
Do you want to get back to talking about class size, and then, okay?
Next, class, class size, and please, Dr. Bregge, correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, but the way I see it is, we only have one real grade, which happens to also be the same fourth grade, where, where at the max, or one shy of the max, do you have this issue with any other grade right now?
So, yes, that, actually, what's, what's different about the other, there's a couple other areas here, that it's, it's different from fourth grade, because, like, according to our policy, you know, we do have seats available in fourth grade, you know, so that, that, that is the policy that we've in place, so, but there are, like, for example, um, and, and I'll throw us to the other end, the TK end.
Sure. Sure.
So where there is a, um, but we're, we're full now, like, it, it, let me just say that, that kindergarten and transitional kindergarten is, those are the most difficult to predict. You know, like what our enrollment is. Because as, as grades in first grade and above, there's this cohort data and trend data that we look at to see what the class sizes will be as all the way through high school. This is always a challenge for school districts because we just don't know who's moved in and how many students that we're getting. So, um, you know, the, it, we, we had, we didn't have any room at Horace Mann left in our TK sections. And so people were having to travel from, uh, if, if they lived close to Horace Mann to El Rodeo. And so we're now at a place though, where it is, we're full at TK. So those, those, the families that we had that were traveling from Horace Mann.
The redirected families?
And some of the new families that have moved in. Um, we're, we're actually, we don't have seats now available in transitional kindergarten. So it makes sense because some of those, 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 those students who are traveling, that the space that's open, opening up is going to be Horace Mann for that section. So that's now a recommendation.
Got it.
For the board. But that's also, I want to just, you know, illustrate that that's how this changes so quickly. Because, you know, we've had people, watched people come in all day today in my office. Like people coming in, moving in, registering. So that changed.
Thank you.
So, so that's a recommendation, since we're having this conversation, um, to our board to, to open up another section at, um, at, at Horace Mann for TK. Because we, people moving in, we have no space for you now.
You're saying you're full at both schools?
Yes.
Okay.
So if someone comes to El Rodeo now that it's full, they're going to be directed to Horace Mann at TK, is that?
No, well, TK are full, so.
No, no, but no, you misunderstand what I'm saying. Both of them are full.
Yes.
Okay, so now a student comes to register and goes, I live in the El Rodeo district and I'm going to go to TK there. We don't have room. We've just opened another class at Horace Mann. They will be directed to Horace Mann.
Unless we agree to open another class.
Right, because here's.
Well, no, no, we don't.
I hear you.
I, it's obvious that we are going to have to open another class at Horace Mann. I'm just saying that the situation is reversed here.
Yeah, right.
So do you need an instruction on that?
Here's what happens, like, so I just, because it's, even, even though that, like, the classes, you know, were full now, that TK section at, at El Rodeo is full now. So, but by opening one at Horace Mann, because that's where people were now being redirected to, that is also now going to open up space at El Rodeo. Because those students that we're accounting for, that will go to Horace Mann.
Are getting pulled out.
Which is what we need because there are, we're, we're in the middle of July. So we have families that are still moving in.
Okay.
That number will only go up.
Okay, so, so in other words, in terms of the families that have reached out to us, I think a couple of weeks ago, we had at least 12 TK families who are Horace Mann families that were being redirected to El Rodeo. Those families can be comforted to know that they are being asked to return to Horace Mann.
So we, we haven't done that yet, but that's, that's sharing with you that that's what we would do is now open up another section. Uh, and it's not that we need board authority to do that, but this, this all has happened all the way up now through, you know, we had, we did have seats before July 4th before. So this is now a point where we would, we would open up another section.
Okay, so you don't need us for that?
Right, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
Right, but it, but it makes sense because it's part of our conversation now, that this is how this, this develops.
How fluid it is.
Right, which is different from the fourth grade situation.
So you're saying, opening up a TK section, um, at Horace Mann? But that does beg the question, so if, if El Rodeo is full, in fact.
Well, no, because some of the kids that are at El Rodeo right now.
Some of the kids are going to be pulled back out.
Kids that were supposed to be at Horace Mann.
Right.
That's what I just.
So, so that means that other than the TK kids at Horace Mann, which is essentially at this point a non-issue, um, are there any other students district-wide that are being redirected to a different school for elementary?
So, yes. So like, another example would be first grade.
At Hawthorne.
At El Rodeo.
Yeah.
Cause we are, we are over by, right, as, again, this changes quickly, but it's that we, we have 96 students and there are like 92 places. So we're, we're four over in first grade at El Rodeo. And then when I look at first grade, um, for, let's see, we've got.
Horace Mann.
We're, we're close because we have, there are seven seats available in first grade at Horace Mann. So if we're four over and we direct four families, then we're, we're right at that there's three left. So again, that's, that would be something that we would just be wa- watching for that. Like we would, you know, we watch these numbers every day. Uh, Ms. Collins Williams and I talk every day, like, just.
Yeah, let's talk about that because I think that we have a lot of dual-working families. And to have one student at one elementary school and have another student at another elementary school is really a challenge. And I would say we even have single-parent families. You know, we have families that are divorced and so when the kids are with one parent versus the other parent, that parent is a single family. Um, I don't know how you get your, um, your four-year-old to TK at one school and your six-year-old to, to first grade at another school, um, by 8:30. It's, that's not an easy thing to do. And then to make it to work by 8:30 or 9:00 as well. I'm not trying to make a blanket statement, I just would say that. Um, if we have these exceptional moments, I think we should really try our best to help families stay in their homeschool. Where when the kids get older, they can walk home. Um, it's just a couple blocks away, there's a reduction in traffic. We're keeping parents who want to be involved in a PTA, in one PTA as opposed to two PTAs. Um, I, I also believe that the families are starting to come back to us and we're going to see that our numbers are growing in the next couple of years. Now we have two beautiful new elementary schools. To me, Horace Mann is still new. We're reinvesting in the play structures, we're reinvesting in the green, the reading green area. We're reinvesting in their, in the new entryway and the gating. Um, I think it's just going to be more and more families coming to us. And especially now that we're going to have our city preschools located at both Hawthorne and Horace Mann. I think we're going to be capturing a lot more families. Before we had like a build it and they will come mentality. And now they're coming and, and I want to make sure that we're building it. Um, I think that it would be really good for our trajectory, our growth and our stability for families to know that we really prioritize the neighborhood feeling. So, you know, um, for what it's worth, I, I think we should prioritize that approach.
So that would be, um, you know, just a change then in the policy, if that's the board direction? Because that, that would be, um.
Well, let me, let's talk about the policies.
Yep.
The policies are the policies, but, but we as a board have the authority to make exceptions to the policies when appropriate, or when we think that there's an exceptional circumstance. Um, so I would think that, for example, in the fourth grade, our agreement is that we are, we can go to a max of 29. But we have one incidence where we're going to be at that max or very close to that max. So, so we're a small enough district where we can take a step back and say, you know what? We've been really fiscally responsible and we can reduce that. And we can go down to 23 by adding another class or 22. And so I would ask my colleagues if we could consider that situation for the fourth grade um, and maybe even the first grade at El Rodeo.
So you're saying, and, well, getting back to the fourth grade, so.
The fourth grade would be a really good grade to do that.
Right, so adding another section, um, at El Rodeo, of course.
It's finite, it's not, we know what we have right now, we know what we're dealing with. So it's not, we're not necessarily opening a can of worms. We're just talking about two classes.
I disagree.
Okay.
About opening the can of worms. I think you're going to get the same problems next year when parents go from fourth to fifth and class size jumps to 29. They're, they're going to say, we went through K through four with 23 kids in the classroom. What is this about? Um, the, the reason that years ago, those policies were put in place was they were not punitive. They were to protect the finances. Because if we don't have something in place and we can always just add another classroom, right?
Mm-hmm.
And just say, and, and in extenuating circumstances, we do have the ability to do that. But the more we do it, the more it's going to hurt our pocketbook. It's a huge investment and it just, to me, it's going to open up major issues. If we get to a natural point where we fill up the grade level district-wide, then absolutely. And I will agree with you on this, I think a priority should not be breaking up families.
Yeah.
That I agree with. If there's ways, like when I heard there was a couple of spaces now back in fourth grade and, and El Rodeo for people to, that we redirected to return, that makes me happy because I think that should be a priority. Judy, what you were saying about having to take kids to two separate elementary schools, I don't like that.
It's not easy.
I don't like that at all. And I would like to see if there's any way, and like Dr. Breggy said, it's fluid, it may change on its own and solve itself. It seems like Horace Mann, so the TK Horace Mann is solving itself.
Yeah.
Okay, which will solve issues at El Rodeo. So.
Laura, go ahead.
Press some of that, please. Um, so what I would like to remind the board is that as policy 5116, there are four conditions that allow students to be transferred to the elementary school or reasons why parents request transfers. The first condition on that, of, of that policy is to keep siblings together. So this is not new. We do this every year in my department and we try to keep students at the same schools. We have very few instances where students are separated. Um, I, we work very hard to make sure that they're not. And, you know, we are watching these numbers on a daily, sometimes hourly basis. And if, if space becomes available, we're on the phone, we're emailing, we're saying, hey, there's a space. Do you want your kids here? Um, it's, it's at the last resort that siblings are separated. So I would say that we have very few instances of that. And if it happens, sometimes parents make that choice for one year to say, I'm going to keep one kid here because I'm, I have hopes that next year I can get my other kid there. So, um, parents are not forced to do that. Um, the other piece is, I agree with what Noah's saying and I also agree with what Judy is saying. Um, but I just, I just want to make sure that we are making, understanding that we have kind of two competing, um, ideas here. If we're going to staff, if we're going to enroll based on homeschool, that's going to cause the, the staffing to increase. Because then we're just going to have to enroll and then staff based on that enrollment. Or if we're enrolling based on maximizing resources, we're going to have to be comfortable with saying we have to balance out the numbers. So I, I want to make sure that we're all kind of thinking along that same line and then figure out how we can best support our families and our students in doing so.
You're, you're absolutely right, Laura, Ms. Collins Williams. I do feel like if people are zoned to a, to a particular area, um, then one of the things that they should be able to enjoy is the fact that they are within walking distance of their home, of their zoned school. Um, I think that, you know, in the back of our minds, of course, we are always thinking about um, those who flock to the private schools and we want to remain attractive and, um, desirable to our families. And I, I think it's a huge problem if you, you know, you invested in a house and you set your sights on the school down the street and you can't go there. But, you know, because it's, it's full or whatever. I think that that, um, it would be, um, very unfortunate and very unfavorable, um, for our district, you know?
Yeah, I, and I think, I think we do the best we can, I understand that. I'm just, um, the idea of walking to your elementary school with your kids, it's interesting that we say that because in the reconfiguration right now and with the completion of El Rodeo, our elementary schools are on the outskirts of town. So it's not a lot, less families are going to be able to walk to those schools than before, right? Um, now, with the switch from Hawthorne to El Rodeo, you might pick up some people who can now walk to school. That couldn't before because they happen to be closer and that, to be their, to their advantage. But some people obviously will become further away. I don't know where everybody lives, but I'm guessing not everybody lives near El Rodeo. Um, I, I would stress, I am a strong advocate of our policy and of, of staffing to contract um, and staffing to the policy. But where we can find ways to keep students together the best we can, knowing that at any given time, that third grader and fifth grader, next year, you're going to two separate schools anyway, right? You, you are always, if you have multiple kids and they're not twins, you are going to be going to separate schools. Sometimes three.
But those start at different times, like for example.
I, I, and we stagger those times on purpose for that reason.
But when you have elementary school students starting at the same time, do you take your, your four-year-old and leave your four-year-old there 35 minutes, you know, 30 minutes earlier? Or do you do that to your six-year-old? And still, you're taking your four-year-old at 7:40 AM to get to the other school with your six-year-old and then you're bringing your four-year-old back.
Judy, you're assuming that they can't get the kids to the same school if that happens. I think, as I, as I know and I agree with Dr. Collins Williams, we try to keep the kids together in the same school so that if there has to be one that goes, they will allow the other one to also go there because we do want to keep them together. So I don't, I don't, you know, I, the parent can make that choice also that keep the kids together and they'll make every opportunity for that to happen.
How many cases do we have right now of splitting up elementary kids?
There's a couple.
A couple.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Collins Williams, but I know that there's one or two.
But did they have the opportunity to maybe move the other one with them? And there was an opening or they just chose to leave them apart?
But the other one is already in their school environment.
Oh, well, then.
It's always, it's always by parental choice if they stay, if there's space.
Right.
We make the space available. We work our list every day, every week. Um, and, and we are, if that space is available, we are calling, we're reaching out, we're, we're letting them know ASAP. Hey, this space is available, we can move you, we can get the kids together. But sometimes it's, you know, one kid is at the homeschool and one kid has to go to, for lack of the better, a better term, the overflow school. And the parent makes the, the choice to, to keep the one child at the homeschool in hopes that they can get the other one back the following year through the transfer process.
So Laura, it's really a perfect storm, right? Because it has to be the fact that the kids are of the ages where one of the grade levels are filled, right? It's not, it just, it, it just happens now, have happened this year a couple of times. Sometimes it may not happen at all.
It tends to happen, you're correct, Noah, yes. And it tends to happen at TK first, TKK and first.
Okay.
Possibly second. And then as the kids age and because we have more seats available in fourth and fifth grade, it kind of balances itself out.
Okay, great.
So I, it, one thing I would just want to add too is, like, because we do, it, it sounds, you know, really contrasts like everything that we believe about education and, you know, that here we are talking numbers and operation. And, um, and so, and I know that you, we, people have to understand that, like, that there's the business side of the, of the district too. Um, the thing I'm just, you know, with these numbers, that, you know, it's like, we're willing as the administration, we're, we want to, you know, follow our policies and, and, you know, we want to, you know, if the board wants to make exceptions or accommodate, like, we're, we're ready to do that. Um, it just, that there's always like, like, as I'm looking at these numbers now, you know, if, if we make a change with one, one grade level at one school, you know, like, I, this just popped out to me that, like, the, the fifth grade sections at Horace Mann, like, there's, there's 28 in a class and, and there's four sections, they're, they're right at 28 for Horace Mann.
They could go to 29 and they're one-year-olds or?
Yeah, but, right, I did, what I'm.
Four more.
They, they can take four more. But what I'm saying is like, it just, you get to a point though, where, you know, it, it, if, if we make a, a change for one class, like, it just, we, we have to have some sort of justification. Um, you know, if the policy did have something in it that said, um, you know, like, that due to administration, like, if there was some, like, we were aware of knowledge about behavior or we're, like, that we were able to do that, like, and make that change or adjustment, like, then that's fine too. Then, then, you know, we're aware of something now that something was brought to our attention because of behavior. So for a year, you know, that, we could have done that on our own. We're, you know, we're following the board policy, of course. Um, but like, if that was even built in the policy, like, that, you know, there may be those extreme circumstances, then we wouldn't be sitting here today because we couldn't. extreme circumstances, then we wouldn't be sitting here today because we could have, we would have made that adjustment already. So I'm just saying, as we look at our policies and revising policy, that may be something that we add to that. Like, we, we may be knowledgeable about something in a specific school, in a certain grade level, that we want to make the exception for.
I, I can be on board with that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't even necessarily think we need to come up with a broad policy. I think that in this instance, we could say, hey, given the circumstances of today, you know, it might be advisable for a variety of reasons to add one more class to the 4th grade and, and just leave it at that.
Right, and...
And TK.
And TK.
The TK one.
TK, I feel like we already got an administrative recommendation for that.
And that should, and will happen, yeah.
So I'm, I'm okay with both. And then going forward, I would love to have more real-time data on is anyone else being redirected to another school.
When you say going forward...
Between now and August 13th.
No, I know, but you said, it was a comment you just made, going forward with both. I reckon I'm okay with going forward with both.
Oh, sure.
I need that clarified.
Sure. I'm just clarifying my position that I think that it would be a good idea to, I agree with your decision to add another TK class, and I think that it would not be a bad idea at all to add another 4th grade class at Hawthorne for this year.
Yeah, I, here's, here's the, the flexibility of, if that, if something like that's in the policy is that, I, because people always like, there's always this adverse reaction, I think it's human nature, when you, when you feel like something is being taken away. And so, really, it's, we, we weren't taking away anything, like, it's, 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 right. So, but it's like, if, if we had that flexibility, that we become aware of a behavior situation at a certain grade level, we know we have to correct it, then we could do that in a way that it's not so, like, public, that we were going to accommodate this for this year so that it doesn't feel like, well, wait, you did that with this class, or like, somebody from a different school is saying, you know, look, you made that exception here. It becomes more like, we're aware of something, we're going to take care of it.
We are aware of it and it's been brought to my attention probably more than any other behavioral situation, barring the Century City, the chronicity of it and some of the more serious, you know, anecdotes that I've gotten.
Yep.
So I think that it is reasonable to say that this is an exceptional circumstance that begs a question for considering another section for 4th grade. So with that said, do we take a vote? Do we do direction? How, how does that work?
There's, it's direction, there's no, there's no vote, it's discussion.
Before we do that, I have one more piece that we need, that I need clarification on because I think it should be part of the direction. Mrs. Menachery just called it out about students being redirected. I want to call to the board's attention that we currently have 14 students that are being redirected away from their homeschool. We have five at El Rodeo being redirected to Horseman.
I'm sorry, these are 4th graders or?
What grade are they?
No, grades.
All grades.
TK, two students, kindergarten, two students, 5th grade, one student. And then at Horseman, being redirected to El Rodeo, we have one kindergarten student, four, four 1st grade students, one 2nd grade student and four, three, uh, four, three 4th grade students. Now, if this is something that...
Going to El Rodeo?
From Horseman to El Rodeo based on space availability.
But I thought...
Because we're very full at, at Kinder and First.
I thought El Rodeo First was full.
They've already been sent. They, they're part, they're part of the, the full, the numbers that are, that are being calculated that made us full.
They had, they had a transfer from before this then.
Well, we haven't done any transfers. These are just enrollments that we, at this point, we were too full at Horseman, so we had to send them...
Let me, let me put it to you in another way, Laura. For example, one parent shared with us that their El Rodeo 1st grader was being, they're new to the district, was being redirected to Horseman.
To Horseman, yep.
So instead of redirecting a Horseman 1st grader to El Rodeo, wouldn't it be better to pull that student back in? And maybe you are.
Don't, remember, remember, they may have a sibling. We look at all of that.
And in this case, they do.
They do, got it.
Right. Yeah. So it's not as simple as just one-to-one, you know, correspondence.
Got you.
So I, I want to be sure that the board has all the facts when you're giving these, the direction because I have to be able to make these decisions and make these, and do, and enroll students in real time, so...
Yeah, you're saying it's family by family as well.
Correct. And, and that's why I'm saying, it's, it's better if we look at it, if we're going to do this, I think this has to be, it begs for a bigger discussion, both with the exception that Dr. Brady is asking, is, is recommending, the administrative oversight and an exception, being able for him to make that call and to say, yes, go ahead and do this. But also, we have to look at if we're going to change policy 5116 and we say we're staffing by homeschool or enrolling by homeschool if we're prioritizing that. Because if, or, or maybe we look at the four conditions where students are transferred and maybe we revise them to maybe only have a couple of reasons and, I don't know, but I just need, I need for us to have the big picture because sometimes there are unintended consequences when you think you're addressing one thing, you actually cause a chain reaction to something else.
Well, would you prefer then that we, we think about this after we have looked at the 5000s policies, which we are due to do, or?
I think, I think we should be careful in going forward right now. I think we, I think the, the, the move to alleviate the immediate pressures to open the additional sections and then let us get everybody rearranged and resituated and then bring that information back to the board and with, with the additional information and then, then I think we have a bigger picture to look at.
I also want to kind of throw out there too that, like, we're kind of airing, like, this is behind the curtain. Because so much of this works itself out anyway, so I want, like, people watching from home that, like, so, like, we're sharing with you kind of this real-time kind of, but as educators have been doing this for decades, that this, a lot of this does work out itself because when you hear that, oh, we're, you know, over by one student here, that there's often, we're, we're in an area where there's high mobility and so, parents don't often say, oh, I'm going to let you know that, you know, after being at Cedars, doing my residency for the last four years, now I'm moving, you know, and the family moves. And, and we don't know that that opening is there until the first day of school. So like, so a lot of it does work itself out. It doesn't mean to say that we need to be, you know, like, this policy, if we're going to do some updating, that'll help us in our planning, but I just want people to know that this, it, it may appear as if, you know, like, we're, you know, you know, just, you know, counting straws or whatever that phrase is, that, that, like, a lot of this does work out that you would never even know about because of people moving.
Every year.
And of course, what people forget...
I agree with what Dr. Brady said, everything he said except for, I've only, I'm only 25, so I've only been doing it like five years.
I just...
He's been doing it every decade.
I wanted to add a couple other points to this. You had mentioned that there's the same issue in the 5th grader Horseman as the 4th grader at El Rodeo.
What I was trying to say is not the same, Mr. Margot. What I was trying to say is, like, if someone hears, like, then it's, oh, but we have 28 in a class, like, it...
I, I know, that's, that goes back to my can of worms statement because you did it for them, why don't you do it for us? And then it starts a chain reaction. And then all of a sudden, you find yourself a million dollars in the hole because you've hired five to 10 teachers, right? It's, it's, we cannot operate that way. That's, that's irresponsible for us to do that. The other thing is, when you do open up classes, you hire a new teacher and people like the familiar and you will get complaints, well, I thought I was going to be with this teacher, now why am I with this teacher? Well, you wanted us to open up another class, right? So there's, there's, it's a no-win scenario pretty much until, you know, until they finish that grade, most likely, but...
But that's why we tried to get this done in the summer, Mr. Margot, because we haven't announced any teacher shit.
No, I know, I know, but people, people who know, right? Like, people who know who's teaching pretty much next year, most people know that and they have in their mind, at least I'll get one of those teachers. And then they don't, right? I just, just having been a teacher and having been a new teacher that year and been a teacher that everybody got and I didn't want the new teacher, until they have me for a year and then they don't want to leave.
Yep.
I do, they don't. Anyway, just so we can try to put this discussion to rest, I, I am fully on board with not you're asking for approval with the TK expansion. We have hit the point where, where both the union contract and the policy dictates that we open another class for that. I do not want to open any other classes at this point for anything else. I'd like to wait and see how things norm out.
Ms. Menachery, how do you feel about that?
Open them all.
I mean, no, no. It's not that I want to open them all, it's that I want to welcome our families and make sure that we're capturing everybody. And I know that, you know, when a family is leaving private school and coming to us first and fourth and they're not getting their homeschool, it might send the message out and that's not the message that we want. Before, families were coming to us in years of more natural breakpoints, like 6th grade or 9th grade. And so, we're having families come to us in the middle of, you know, an elementary school years and I really want to encourage them to do that. And so that's really, you know...
And theoretically, you're right, you're right.
And so, I just really want as, as many families who want to come on back down to BHUSD to do that. And I know that increasing enrollment is something that's been a big priority to us. And so, you know, to respond to your comments, I absolutely agree with the TK addition and in my mind, it would be a good idea for the two 4th grades in Horseman and El Rodeo to be on a similar playing field. So it would be in the 22 range for Horseman and in the 23 range for El Rodeo. And for that reason, I think it would be a good idea to add a 4th grade class in El Rodeo.
Well, I agree with the family concept and the kids in the same school and in their homeschools and everything, but as was pointed out here a little bit ago, this situation changes daily. It's fluid. You know, we may find that two or three students aren't returning during the course of the next few weeks and we would not need to open a class. I, I do not feel that we need to jump right now to open up another class because there is openings there right now. We were without openings in TK, that's totally full and I agree with the fact that we need to open one. But I do not feel at this point that we are pushed against the wall to open another class. However, should it become apparent that we need to open another class? I do hope that we open it as quickly as possible to make all the changes so that people can be directed to the school that they want to go to school because at that point, if we do, it shouldn't be a problem and that we are able to get that class up and running with a teacher and the supplies and everything that that person will need to open that class because that would be very important to me.
Right.
So I, I'm not, I'm not advocating for another class right now. I would like to wait a couple of weeks. This is the beginning of July, we're not opening till another month, things could change and I would like to give it a chance to see if, if people, but, so that we would not be forced to do that. But if we have to, then so be it.
I'm not sure how much, and maybe Ms. Collins-Williams can, can answer this, how much movement is there for the 4th grade generally? Like, I know that there is flex, there, there, I, I do believe that 9th grade, you can see a lot of variability from like, what you projected for enrollment versus what goes on for the fall. You know, maybe they move right at that point, you know, so they're, now their kid is going to a different 9th grade. I'm not so sure that a lot of people will be leaving the 4th grade. It, it seems like a pretty, a pretty stable cohort, I mean, I...
About more coming.
Yeah, more, more would come in, I guess is what I'm saying, which would be more...
If that's the case, then we open another class.
Right, so I guess I, I'm saying in that regard, it, it feels like, yeah, you want, you would like to wait, right? Right.
For reference, we have approximately 18 students enroll in 4th grade throughout the 23, 24 school year overall. But we had the space because we had, like, we have, currently, we have 17 seats available in the district. So we were able to accommodate those students. We had more seats last year. But you're correct, Dr. Sternan, that, that is a pretty stable cohort. Not a lot of students leave prior to the beginning of the school year or even in the beginning of the school year. Maybe one or two that something happened over the summer, either their family moved or, you know, there was a change in the family circumstance, but generally, they are, that is a very pretty stable cohort.
Right. Yeah, right. So if anything, there will be more 4th graders. And some would argue that would come, not be the direct cause of the behavior problems, but it would compound the behavior problems. I mean...
Well, but remember, the space is at Horseman, so they would be in Horseman.
They would, they would then go there.
Right, although there is a slight opening now, like, for...
Slight for a couple.
You know, a couple families, but, you know, it, it doesn't take away the, from the fact that, that we're, we're going to be at 29, you know, for El Rodeo. But it's, you know, it, we're, we're not just saying, when, when Ms. Collins-Williams says that, you know, like, yeah, we check this, we, it is, like, I know that I've had upset families in my office and we've had meetings together where, you know, we, we do look, we do move families if they want to in the middle of the year. Some choose not to when there's an opening that's available, but it, it really is our, our north star for making sure that people get to where they want to be. It, it is something that we look at every single day.
And we try, and we do it with a very systematic, and a very systematic, disciplined way to make sure that we are fair and supportive of all our families.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And it just, one thing too, I just remembered that just before we started the year for the 23, 24 school year, we had somebody that was coming to, to public comment and, and also talking about not being able to get into the school. And it was, I think, the next week or something, Laura, where it was, we had that opening and, and they were called and they were, you know, before, right before school started. So it, it really is a fluid process, but we do stay on top of it. And we were at 29, 29, 29, now there's a couple of openings there. It doesn't help though, if that particular family, there's two grade levels that are full. Like, that's, then that becomes like, what are the chances of that happening? And that's...
Fairly daily.
Right, and it's unfortunate because, like, being on the front lines, like, that's the last, as, as a welcome to BHUSD, there's nothing more difficult than to have that conversation.
It's also, you know, it's a matter of prioritizing budgets, right? As, as, as a board, there's a finite amount of dollars and we can decide, well, we can cut here if we decide that it's more important to have flexibility on these class sizes, then we can cut here. So just as we look at the policy and as we think about this moving forward, we don't have an infinite amount of money, we have a finite amount of money and we can, we as a board can make those decisions. And you can decide to shift money out of programs, but from my experience in the last 13 years, we've tend to always want it at all, right? We never want to give up things. Once we have them, we don't give them up. So that's why this has become kind of the safeguard in, I know people don't see it this way, but in, in protecting the budget, staying positively certified and making sure we can afford raises when the time comes and all of these things, this is what happens, right?
Yes.
Because something's got to give. So that's just my ancient words of wisdom. And overall, is enrollment up or down this year from last year?
I...
We're about the same.
About the same?
Yeah, it's, we, we've been pretty flat, but it's, again, it's, it's, this is the very difficult time because not everyone tells us if they're leaving, you know, so...
No, I, I, no, totally get it. Thank you.
But I was also looking at the demographic information that we had, the projection for this year, it was 3107 and at one point, we were literally at 3107. So we were pretty much, very much on with the projections from the demographic study.
Sarah, they're saying we were on.
They were saying we're on it.
Though I'm saying, but it hasn't changed any. I mean, it keeps pretty much level.
Right, right around 3100, give or take a few, either way, is where we are.
And I, again, I know we're going to be looking at the 5000 policies, I, you know, I'll, I'll throw this out there again when we meet, but I just think having, having the responsibility and the authority to be able to, to make a change, if there is an issue that's brought to my attention as a superintendent, I would love some flexibility in being able to, you know, ensure that, you know, we can do that without violating board policy.
Totally noted.
All right, well, we can move on to board member comments or communication or meeting reports.
Remi, do you have anything?
No, not this time, thank you.
Soaking it all in tonight, huh?
It's going to be great.
Well, welcome, I didn't officially welcome you, welcome, Remi, to what will prove to be the best year of your life. I want to thank KBev, saw some people wandering in and out. It's soon going to all be just robots and AI, right? That's what it's going to be. be. Just a reminder, the Festival Beverly Hills is on July 21st at Beverly Gardens Park between 12 and 6. It's the second festival. I was at a meeting this morning and was reminded of that, so I wanted to remind everybody. And the Beverly Hills Reads, which is in partnership with the district and the Human Relations Commission and the city, is having their big event on September 15th with We Were the Lucky Ones, which, if you haven't read, colleagues, please read it. I finished it. I binged-read it. That's going to be my new thing. I'm not binge-watching anymore, I'm binge-reading.
I binge-listen with speechify.
Look at you. Good for you. Good for you. And then I watched the Hulu special. And I recommend, please read it first. The Hulu special is good, but read it first. Very important. And, oh, and Dr. Bregge, I apologize. I told him I was not going to wear a jacket to the meeting tonight, so I'm taking off my jacket. So at least, before the meeting is adjourned, I can at least be part of that. There you go.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Have a good month. We have a little time off here, so we'll see you in August. No, we do, we do.
You do.
You do. You have a school to open.
Yes.
Stop sitting around.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't envy you being in your position to handle the problem with the fourth grade situation and how it's going to evolve. So I just.
I've got a great team, so.
I'm sure that you will. I just would like to welcome Remi again and welcome him aboard. I loved your first presentation. I look forward to more. And I guess, I'm off to Minnesota for fishing, wakeboardings, water skiing, jet skiing. You think I don't do them all, huh?
I remember. You had pictures.
And maybe I'll catch another fish this year. And so have a wonderful week, month of July. I will not be here for the festival, that's unfortunate. But I would like to just mention, I went to a, the CTE meeting at the, that they had recently, and I believe that you were also there. One of the things is that they're trying to increase the number of opportunities for the students to take part in during their high school years. And I thought that the way they were going to reach out and do that is really good. And, and then again, of course, we do recognize the wonderful accomplishment that Remi mentioned in his report about our KBEV, the, the award that they got back in Atlanta. I think it's amazing that it's, it's amazing, and I'm so proud of them. And, and they brought home the gold, not the gold that brought home the silver, but it's fabulous. And have a wonderful month of July, everybody. Stay safe. And please stay away from COVID.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you. No further comments? And that's it. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.